Okay. Good evening. I would like to welcome everybody to the City of Pinole Planning Commission Regular Meeting on Monday, February 22nd, 2021. And due to the State of California's declarations of emergency, this meeting is being held pursuant to the authorization from Governor Newsom's executive orders. City Council and Commission meetings are no longer open to in-person attendance. If you have any comments, public comments to the Planning Commission, either on citizens to be heard or to the, on any of the agenda items, please email them to dhannham@ci.pinole.ca.us. Again, that's dhannham@ci.pinole.ca.us. You'll see that if that's too many, too much to remember, this, that email address will be displayed later in the meeting. So can we do the Pledge of Allegiance, everyone? So I pledge allegiance. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hanam, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Benzeli.
Present.
Commissioner Moriarty.
Present.
Commissioner Wong. He's absent right now.
Yeah, sorry, David. You know, I'm sorry, I just, I was late, I just tried.
Oh, no problem. Okay, good, you're here. Vice Chair Flashman.
Present.
Chair Current.
Here.
Let the record show that we have five commissioners tonight. We can take action on all the items on this agenda, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to Agenda Item Letter C, Citizens to Be Heard. The public may address the Planning Commission on items that are within its jurisdiction and not otherwise listed on the agenda. Planning Commissioners may discuss the matter brought to their attention, but by state law, the Ralph M. Brown Act, action must be deferred to a future meeting. Time allowed is five minutes each. And again, if you have any comments, you can address them. The email address is displaying on the screen at dhannham@ci.pinole.ca.us. And if you have any comments, give them in. Mr. Hanam, do we have anybody who wants to speak?
Yes, we have one comment. The comment states, "To all City of Pinole Planning Commissioners, Planning Manager, City Manager, Mayor, Councilmember, Staff, and Pinole Citizens, can you please address, reply, and respond to the following issues, problems that face our city? One, what is the current status on repairing the major Pinole Creek bank, Hillside Breach Side? At 1400 Pinole Valley Road, adjacent to the Sprouts Gateway Shopping Center Parking Lot and Creek Trail that has had a temporary tarp cover on it over the last two years, and still is subject to more erosion with the several passing current and future rainstorms that will result in a major slide and damage to our creeks, hillsides, trail, and the Sprouts Shopping Center Parking Lot? We have called both the city and the county Storm Flood Control District on this problem several times over the last two years, without any response for a defined plan for permanent repair fixed to the serious breach erosion problem. Number two, why did the city allow the new Scott Lee Eye Surgery Building to be painted a stark white as well as the totem pole-like shrubbery trees that are a standout and is ugly eyesore and don't fit in with the surrounding buildings and landscape? Sincerely, Jim, neighbors, friends, concerned citizens of Pinole."
Okay. Those are topics that are we regularly bring up in the Planning Commission. I don't know if we should, I guess we can address them later in the meeting because I'm sure that those questions are going to be asked at the, or similar questions are going to be asked at the, you know, when it's time for the commissioners to talk. But do you, do you have any comments to make about that at this point, Dave, or should we hold off until the Commissioners' meeting? Commissioners' reports?
I mean, the quick, the quick answer number one is, I don't, I'm not sure. I don't, that's a Public Works issue. I'd have to follow up with our Director on that to see where, see where we're at on those. And then the second one, I've got a report on that on the, later in the meeting. But just in general, I'm working with Dr. Lee right now on redoing some of that, so that's, so that's kind of, and I'll, and I'll report, I'll, I'll report more in detail on that later, because that's part of my, I'm sure it's going to be a question, and I wanted to update the Commission on where we were at with that, so.
Yeah, that's, that's, I know that that's the appropriate time to do that, because it is already agendaized.
Right.
Okay, and also, I just want to say, those are good points, too, you know, that these are things that the Planning Commission has been wrestling with, too. Are there any other emails?
At this point, we don't have any, any additional comments.
Okay, and. Quick question, I'm sorry, who, who was it that submitted that email, again?
Jim, and the neighbors and friends, concerned citizens of Pinole.
So not a last name on the Jim?
No.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Next item on the Agenda, since there's no more, Students to Be Heard, will be D, the Meeting Minutes. Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of January 25th, 2021. Any comments on those? If nobody has any comments, does anybody want to make a motion for approval?
I'm sorry, I just have one comment.
Okay.
First of all, with the meetings, thank you very much for attaching the, the emails and the contact there. That, that makes a big difference, being able, for us being able to read that instead of trying to remember what was read into the minutes. The second thing is, and you can advise me when it would be appropriate to ask, because I know that this is just the consent. So I wanted to confirm that we had responded to Ms. Jessica Delgado on just her second, her second point. So I'm not sure when we should address that, and I can take it to that point when we do.
Well, this is, this is, I mean, this is an item on the agenda, so it's not a consent item, so we can, we can go ahead and talk about it. I was responding to Ms. Delgado through my email, so I responded to all of her comments as the meeting was kind of going on. Because I would have had to do that the next day anyway, based on when they were, so I, I responded to Ms. Delgado from, from my, from my computer.
Okay, great. So she got the link to the existing agenda, you know, items, and she got the, where she could find the, the site plan and everything.
Yeah, we, we actually forwarded, we actually forwarded her the site plan, because that was for Pinole Square, I think she was looking for. We actually, we, 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 the next day, we forwarded her the plans, the conditions of approval, the final COA. So she, we, we were able to get her everything she needed.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, or will somebody please make a recommendation to approve with a second?
I move that we, this is Commissioner Moriarty, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular Pinole Planning Commission meeting of January 25th, 2021, as was amended.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Yes, Commissioner Benzeli seconded that.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, we got a motion on, all that are in favors, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Okay, so I guess it passes 5-0. All right. Then we'll move on to public hearings. You know, I want to, at the beginning of an item, let's see, do we have any public hearings? Do we still, yeah, we do have a public hearing. I wasn't sure how they, how it was classified. The agenda item was classified. At the beginning of an item, the Chair will read the description of that item as stated on the agenda. The city staff will then give a brief presentation of the proposed project. The Commission then may ask staff questions about the item. For those items listed as public hearings, the Chair will open the public hearing and ask the applicant if they wish to make the presentation. Those persons in favor of the project will then be given an opportunity to speak, followed by those who are opposed to the project. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. The public hearing will then be closed, and the Commission may discuss the item amongst themselves and ask questions of staff. The Commission will then vote to approve, deny, approve in a modified form, or continue the matter to a later date for a decision. The Chair will announce the Commissioner's decision and advise the audience of the appealed procedure. And note, no public hearings will begin at 11:00 PM. Items remaining on the agenda after 11:00 PM will then be held over to the next meeting. The first hearing is one zoning code text amendment added Chapter 17.28, historic preservation overlay to the municipal code and adopting Old Town Design Guidelines, ZCA 21-01, to request consideration of a zoning ordinance text amendment for creating a historic preservation overlay HPO district. The district will define the areas of the city in Pinole that have historic significance. The ordinance will create standards and of development within borders as described in Exhibit A of the Old Town Design Guidelines, as well as properties that may be subsequently added to the HPO district. The applicant is the City of Pinole, 2131 Pear Street, Pinole, California 94564, and the location is Old Town Pinole as defined in the Old Town Design Guidelines and applicable citywide. And the planner is Alex Moog. And I believe before we turn this over to staff, I think there, there are several members of the Commissioners who do live within the area we're talking about, and I think that the protocol has been that we, when we accuse them. Is that correct?
Oh, I'm not on mute anymore, sorry. Um, yes, Chair, Commissioner Moriarty and Commissioner Flashman both have, live within the proposed overlay zone, and so they have potential conflict of interest, because there are currently only five members of the Commission, because if both of them were forced to recuse themselves, there, we wouldn't have enough, we wouldn't have a quorum. And so the FPPC regulations say that one of them should be selected randomly to participate, and that selection, wrote, wrote notes on it, posted, and put them in the bowl before the last meeting. And Commissioner Moriarty's name was the one that was drawn out of the bowl. The meeting can be, and will have the meeting, so Commissioner Moriarty can participate. Commissioner Flashman cannot participate at, in the first part of the meeting. What we're able to do, unfortunately, you know, we couldn't do it for the whole ordinance, but, I mean, the whole item, but once we talk about the ordinance, and the Commission makes the decision regarding the ordinance, before we talk about the, the design guidelines, once that first step is dealt with, then Commissioner Flashman will be able to come back and participate as a member of the Commission regarding that second issue, regarding the, excuse me, design guidelines, once the decision regarding the, the ordinance and whether or not to create this zone has been decided by the Commission.
Thank you, Alex, and I will remind the community that this item was on last month's agenda, but we, because of our reduced number of Commissioners, we were not able to have a quorum after the elimination of, of, you know, after recusals of, to, to be able to look at this issue. So this is a carryover from the January meeting. Okay, all right, with that, I, Sarah, I guess you're sitting, is it Sarah, I guess you, you can go watch Jeopardy now, I guess, and, you know, for a while. Don't tell me what the final question was, please.
Do I need to go off of the?
No, you don't. As long as you don't, as long, you know, as long as you don't communicate to anybody, you know, I mean, you know, when we're meeting in the chamber, the rule, the rule is that you have to leave the room because of the, the fact that you could be given hand signals or whatever, but I think if you just eliminate your video, you're, and Alex, you can correct me, you're.
Yeah, I, I think if you just put yourself on, on mute and, and turn your camera off, that's sufficient.
Yeah. Watch it on TV instead of Jeopardy, you know, but, but anyways, yes, you're, you're more than welcome. Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to Alex to give a presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Next slide, please, Dave. Thank you. So. I guess, can you, one more slide, Dave, forward? I guess, these are in a weird order, I didn't think about, but just as some, some background, the, the City Council, at this year, probably, at this time, it's probably almost a year ago, I think it was during an in-person meeting, discussed that a future, they want a future agenda item to discuss issues related to historic preservation in the city, and, and what those, you know, what, what were options for dealing with historic preservation? And they sent the item to the Municipal Code Update Subcommittee to, to review the issue, to discuss possible options, and to come up with recommendation for the City Council's consideration. So, Dave, if you could actually go back one slide, I think I, I put the slides in the right order the first time around. So, just to go over some of the general plan policies before we dive into the ordinance, both the general plan and the three-quarter specific plan have, have a good amount of, you know, policies, goals, action items that are related to historic preservation. And then, and some of those are listed in the staff report, you know, to a goal of maintaining Pinole's unique character and its sense of place, and preserving, you know, the historic and small-town character of the city. So that's something that the city's always valued, in its sort of main organizational documents. And there's a lot of policies to further that, but over time, you know, things have slipped through the cracks there, you know, there hasn't been things on the books necessary to protect, that the city could use to enforce sort of preservation mindset. And part of why that is, is because the municipal codes, not the municipal codes, excuse me, the general plan actually only identifies three properties as historic. So the city had no way to enforce any sort of historic guidelines, because there was only three places identified as historic, and that, you know, those are the, the, the Faria House, the Fernandez House, excuse me, not the Free House, the, the Fernandez House, the Bank of Pinole, and then the Downer Home are the, are the, are the three that are identified as historic. And, and two of those are on the National Register of Historic Places, and one of them is not. And the general plan also refers sort of very vaguely to the Pinole waterfront as historic, without sort of saying where that is or what that is. So there's been a desire for historic preservation, I think, through, through many in the community, and certainly reflected in the general plan, to preserve Pinole's history and the things that make it special in some of the architectural features, especially, you know, obviously in the Pinole Town area. But the city hasn't had sort of an ordinance on the book to really put teeth into those goals. And, and the general plan, along with these goals, really does anticipate some of the follow-up action items are an adoption of some sort of historic preservation ordinance. And, and for whatever reason, that had never happened, that has, that hasn't happened. So, so next slide, Dave, thank you. So the, the Subcommittee met multiple times, three times, to discuss what, what it was looking for and what were various options. And, you know, there, there was a range of things considered, you know. At one end, there was a thought of, well, maybe just, maybe what we just need is some plaques and informational material. You know, no strict requirements, but just sort of to educate people, you know, people who walk by some of these historic places may not know what they are, or what the, the history about them is. And so that was one idea. Another, sort of on the other side of the extreme, is, well, we should do a historic preservation ordinance, like a landmarks preservation ordinance that some cities have. And the way those work is, is generally, there's a historic survey done by a professional, and a list of historic properties is identified, and, you know, no, no changes are allowed to those properties unless it goes through a rigid process. But the Commission didn't, the Subcommittee, excuse me, didn't really like the idea, because, one, it, it can be expensive and, and time-consuming to, you know, you have to hire someone to do this. And it really, really adopts and enforces strict requirements. And what the Subcommittee thought is that, well, right now, a lot of things just happen without anyone really knowing they're happening to historic structures, without the owners in some cases knowing that they're historic or part of a historic community, you know, if you live in certain, certain residences in the Old Town area, you know, it might not look that, that special, for lack of a better word, if you're just looking at it by itself. And so you may not even know that this is, you know, representative of, you know, a certain type of historic work or broader, you know, community effort. And so the, eventually, what the Commission decided on was this ordinance that we're going to talk about tonight, excuse me, what the Subcommittee decided on was this ordinance we're going to talk about tonight. And they reviewed it once or twice, went through it, and then recommended it move forward first to the Planning Commission as a zoning ordinance, and then to the City Council for approval. And they also recommended, you know, as we'll talk about later, that these design guidelines sort of be reviewed and, and re-updated. So, next slide, Dave. So what this ordinance does is it creates a historic preservation overlay zone. An overlay zone is a type of supplemental zoning that establishes regulations over and above what the normal zoning allows for. It, it doesn't change the underlying zoning, but it creates sort of special restrictions. So some of you who've been on the Commission may remember, or may be aware of that, the city has a high-density, higher, I forget the exact word, high residential density overlay zone that basically says, well, property, any development that happens on these properties has to meet a minimum density requirement, residential density requirement. Doesn't change the underlying use, doesn't change the underlying proposals, but it has that sort of overlay on it, sort of, sort of just an additional requirement. And that's what an overlay does, and that's what this overlay would do, but add special historic preservation, additional requirements. The overlay does not create a landmark status, so simply by being in the overlay does not make a building, you know, considered to be historic or, you know, landmark, and that's important in part, you know, for many reasons, but in part just sequels or sometimes has requirements for studying impacts on historic buildings. And, and that wouldn't, this doesn't impact that at all. But what this ordinance does do, next slide, please, Dave, I think, thanks, is create a mechanism to make sure that projects within this overlay get an extra eye, get some extra review just to make sure that anything about the project isn't going to impact any historic, historic resource. So the first thing is the ordinance will create an overlay zone. The overlay zone takes the, the current map of Old Town Pinole that we're, we're looking at in a minute, and makes that where the overlay is. Future properties can be added if the Council determines that, and there's a process in the ordinance for doing that. Basically, the City Council or the Planning Commission could initiate the process, just like any zoning, excuse me, any zoning change to add a property to the overlay. It doesn't have to be contiguous to the overlay, it could be, so if, you know, in Pinole Valley, there's a, a historic structure or place out there, we could just add that one parcel to the overlay, we don't have to spread the overlay all the way out there. But for right now, the starting point is just the, unless the, you know, Commission can of course make other suggestions, but it's just sort of what is traditionally thought of as Old Town. So next slide, Dave. So the, this is the map of where the old, the Old Town overlay would be, the area outlined in black. And this comes from the existing Old Town Design Guidelines, it has this map. And, and the Subcommittee thought it was accurate, and there was no reason really to change it. Just, I always get a little confused by this map, I feel like it's oriented a little weirdly, or just I think about San Pablo as running sort of perp, you know, directly a straight line, so it always confuses me. But, so the yellow line is San Pablo, the orange line is, is Tenet, and then a little bit of it is Pinole Valley, and then the, the red is Pinole Valley, and you can see right there, Collins, the Collins School is sort of a nice, big, easy-to-identify area. So this is the general area of where the overlay would be within that black outline. One thing for the Commission to consider is whether or not sort of the, the gateway sites, you know, where Sprouts is, where Kaiser is, whether those should be included or not, you know. At the time, the overlay, the historic preservation guidelines were adopted, those, you know, were not developed areas like they are now. Now they're developed in a certain way, you know, the Commission may not feel like they're, you know, need to be consistent with the rest of the more traditional Old Town area, or it's, it's fine to consider, you know, to keep them as is and to keep it as part of that area. So, next slide, Dave. So assuming the, you know, overlay is adopted, how the overlay will work is when any project is adopted or proposed in the overlay. So that could be, you know, tearing down a building and building a new structure, it could be doing an addition in the back, you know, onto a home. It could be, you know, someone wanting to add a sign on top of their building, it could be, you know, someone wanting to build an ADU in the backyard. The, before it goes through the design review process, the Planning Manager would, the zoning administrator, excuse me, would look at the project and, and make a determination whether or not the project, the proposed project would have an impact on a cultural resource. And the ordinance defines what a cultural resource is, and it is basically any sort of structure or, or building with a historic, cultural, architectural, or aesthetic significance. So this could be a beautiful old building that was built in 1870. It could be a really great example of a certain type of architectural style from the 70s, and maybe it's the only one left in Pinole. It could also be just a, a normal run-of-the-mill house, but it happens to be where, you know, some historic person lived, or some historic event took place that we may want to preserve. And, and importantly, the historic, the impact could be, most likely, the most, the typical situation, excuse me, would be that a project has an impact on a cultural resource that's on the same property as the proposed project, right? The classic example being- The classic example being it's a one story building, you wanna build a second story addition or some sort of addition, you know, that's gonna make the building look. Could make the building look weird or or, you know, impact the aesthetic quality of the building, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a project on. Uh the impact doesn't necessarily have to be felt on that property, it could be. There's a historic one story building next door and building a a thirty story, not not thirty story. Three story building right next door, right up against the property line, that just is, it's gonna create shadows, it's gonna. Change the aesthetic of, you know, this this block um this area. So it doesn't have to, the impact on a cultural resource doesn't have to be right on the same property as the proposed project. Next slide um. So so first, that decision is appealable, um whether or not it'll impact a a cultural resource that can be appealed. And like all zoning administrative decisions, that gets appealed to the planning commission and if someone doesn't like the planning commission's decision. It could be appealed to the city council, but regardless of whether it's appealed or not. If the project would impact a cultural resource, the project is required to comply with special design guidelines and those. Special design guidelines um are the historic preservation guidelines, we're gonna talk about in a little bit. Uh and the guidelines are applied through the otherwise applicable design review process, so. As the the commission knows, we have administrative design review that just uh for small projects generally uh. Uh you know, for example, additions under five hundred square feet, reviewed by the uh zoning administrator, whereas. Other projects, you know, most commercial projects, uh new single family homes, those are subject to comprehensive design review. Which goes to the planning commission. And then whichever, when it goes through the design guidelines, the historic preservation design guidelines would be applied during that process. So the old town design guidelines, um I mentioned a few times already that they're existing, they're they're already on the books um. They are in fact, were in fact adopted, you know, twenty three years ago or more than that at this point in nineteen ninety seven um but. For whatever reason, they, you know, it's not clear to us uh whether they were maybe applied the first few years. But certainly in the last few years, last ten years, they sort of haven't been applied at all, staff really wasn't aware of them. Part of that issue, I think, may have been that by their own terms, they're not mandatory, it uses a lot of. Oh, you know, we should apply them, these are recommendations um. I just uh zoomed away out and but uh. Hold on one second while I zoom back in so I can see what I'm looking at uh. Sorry about that. But, you know, essentially, so for example, what the, one of the things the the ordinance. The design guidelines say is, you know, to quote directly, the design guidelines which follow. Are to be used as an advisory tool, compliance with these guidelines is strongly encouraged. So I don't know for sure, but you can imagine a situation where, you know, the first few years. Uh after they were adopted, staff who would, you know, work with developers or whoever with these projects, but there's not a ton of projects coming in in this area. Over time, people can forget about it or especially if there's not much teeth behind them and. You know, an applicant sort of chooses to ignore it and there's not a ton you can do about it. Um that over time, they might have fallen out of use, um so what this ordinance does. Uh is makes it mandatory for uh projects within this high, excuse me, within the historic preservation overlay. If they impact the cultural resources, they have to comply with these design guidelines. And the design guidelines, as you see, they're not overly uh overly strict, they don't say, you know, you have to paint every. You can only use these three colors, um they're pretty flexible still, um but uh. They will have to, projects will have to comply with them within the the overlay zone. And it'll ultimately, you know, a a project that comes before the planning commission, um it will ultimately be up to the planning commission to determine whether or not. The the project complies with these um design review guidelines. So we'll we'll have an opportunity to talk about the design review guidelines in more depth later in the meeting. Uh cuz we're we're trying to segment this into two issues, but um. For now, the focus is just on the historic preservation or an overlay itself. Um whether the commission has any questions about it, ideas, suggestions. Issues with the map of overlay itself or the process, um I'm happy to answer questions or take. Feedback, we can always incorporate those into the recommendation that is made to the city council and I believe. Dave, uh if you go to the next slide, yeah, so at this point, um what we're recommending is that the planning commission. Recommend approval to the city council of an ordinance, adding chapter seventeen point two eight. Historic preservation overlay to the municipal code. So that was a lot of information and and jumped, I jumped around a little bit there, so I'm happy to answer any question that. Commission may have about, you know, any part of this overlay.
Thank you, Alex, and um and and just um for the audience out there, um there was a a a. Handout uh that had the old town design guidelines, which is quite detailed and. I don't think we're planning on going through this thing by page by page, so I hope that those on the outside community had an opportunity to. To review the guidelines. Right now, we're talking about questions from the commission commissioners to the staff, so. I'll start off with um with with Adam.
So I, is this just to vote on the actual, the overlay, the map itself or the design guidelines?
It it would just be on the map itself in the the uh text of the ordinance, which is um. Sort of lays out the process for how that overlay would work, but not the design guidelines themselves.
Okay, um as far as, what about the actual process about defining whether this is part of? You know, the the historic aspect of it, like if it's a cultural resource or not, is that part of this?
Yeah, that that discussing that now is part of this, yeah.
Okay, so I'm curious, how is the cultural part determined? I know they talked about, you know, there's several criteria. I think it was, you know, the cultural resource definition. Is there like a checklist or is there some sort of, it can be seen as fairly subjective, you know, was she like. Emphasized that if a person insisted and she gifts it or not, I mean, that can be different, these are different.
Zoning, the and that's an excellent point, um. The way it's set up is that right now it's the zoning administrator that makes that determination. Uh the his or or her um determination can be appealed to the planning commission. But they make the initial determination, so you know, they get a project if they're in. Right, big thing what this does is they're gonna project and they'll know this is within the overlay zone, I should, I need to look into this or double check. You know, and you know, they can look at the project and see, oh, this is a building that was built. You know, ten years ago, I know this isn't a. Cultural resource, I know that the buildings around it aren't cultural resources, it just happens to be in this area, so um. It's up to the zoning administrator to make that first uh determination, like any zoning. Administrative determination, they have the right to always refer it to the planning commission to make that decision, so if it's something they're not. Hundred percent sure of or just think it'll be, you know, controversial or someone's gonna appeal their decision anyway. They can always just refer it to the the planning commission directly to make that determination, but. You are right, it is subjective in some ways, there's no um. This sort of work is always, this type of, you know, historic preservation ordinances are always subjective. Uh at at some point, making that determination um. And the the subcommittee thought this was just the best way cuz it was still sort of informal, but but made sure that a project didn't get. Approved without someone at least sort of thinking about it.
Oh, and also when these projects come in, I mean, I I mean, since the zoning administrator come out of my office or or me, as a matter of fact. So, I mean, I'd have to take a look at, yeah, when the when the building was built, the actual, I'd have to actually go out. Usually you have to go out and take a look at around the site, I mean, Google and that doesn't work, you gotta really go out there and see what's on on hand. Uh so a side visit would be, I would require a side visit spot there um to take a look at it. And then if it's, and then just examine the lists. Of any buildings and, you know, it might be on a list that we don't know about, so we can check the state and the county and the city list just to make sure. It's not on a list, uh and at that point, then we then I would move forward with the determination of what that.
But as far as the history of the site, would that, would you go back through deeds and who's owned the site and the. You know, the history of the site from, you know, from when it first developed, or is that?
I mean, we could, I mean, if if we, well, I would check our building records to see when the when the building first, if it wasn't, we could. I mean, we could do a deed search, I mean, I I I would, I wouldn't make that decision unless I went out, once I went out and saw the building. And then I said, yeah, I probably need to see when this, and we need a D train or something of that nature.
And I would just add that, you know, that particular option was just included sort of. For something and, you know, maybe something will happen in the future, you know, I'm. Not aware and I think, you know, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be normal to expect the zoning administrator or Dave to, you know, do a title search for everything, you know. If if it's not sort of known in the community that some historic person lived there or historic. You know, event took place there, it probably is not something that's gonna be um. You know, known, but who know, you know, in twenty years from now, fifteen years from now, maybe, you know, a plain house where a current council member lives, maybe there'll be. You know, the the governor will wanna, or the president will wanna say, hey, that's historic. Or or some, you know, a kid in Pinole Valley High who, you know, don't even know their name yet, so. That was sort of the idea, just to include that in case, you know. It it's pretty common for these types of ordinance ordinances, but not. Not an expectation that there'll be some sort of deep historic research going on for each one.
Okay, cool, thank you, and as far as the map, uh give you bring the map back up cuz I had a question on whether the set of properties. I guess it's northeast of Pinole uh tenant, um just west of um. Let me say particularly the railroad tracks, I guess, um whether that, the black lines kind of. Say where it is. Yes, it's between, it's between the two railroad track areas, um whether that black line encapsulates. The properties kind of north of the first set of properties, or it kind of just, it just limits the first set of properties. There's two kind of two black lines that kind of hit them with in or out, yeah.
One of those is, I believe, um it's not clear on that map, but like it's the street, what uh. There, oh, I see where you're talking about, north of there. I um. Think it it, well. Well, never, I had always assumed that it was the farther north one. Um that ran sort of almost at the border, you know, maybe one house in, in that um other line near. The tenant have is um that black line. Was more the street boundary, but it's an, you know, it's up to the commission um. To decide, you know, whether you wanna include those homes over in that area within it or or not. Before this goes to the city council, we will be making sort of a more of a formal overlay map. Like what you would see on the zoning map. And so it, based on what the commission decides, uh you know, we can adjust the map accordingly.
So the last comment I have is on the uh the gateway shopping area, even though I know the properties have been fairly well developed at this point, I think they're. Um still important either, even if they're just, you know, applied so that new developments, you know, match the current developments. Uh that are there and the coloring and all that stuff, I think it's important to keep those properties in um. In that overlay, even though the historicness of it'll be recent, but there's still some consistency in that area.
Well, A- Adam, I think we're gonna be, uh right now, we're we're asking questions for staff, I I I appreciate your comment, I think that. That's probably more appropriate when we bring, uh when we're deliberating on this. So I think there's, I think there's a lot of questions about the boundaries that are in our minds about whether they're appropriate or not.
No further questions.
Uh Simon.
Thank you, Chair, uh hey, Alex, I I have kind of related questions that coming from Adam anyway, so, you know, uh. I want to know a little bit better about the process of adding, you know, because right now, what we're trying to say is the HPO zone, it's literally kind of. Currently on a map, like copying the old town map, and you did mention in your presentation saying that. It is, you know, it up to the recommendations of the planning commissions and get approval by the city council that we can add properties in it, right? So immediately, and you raised that question actually really well, you're 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 reading my mind already, that, hey, who knows, ten years from now that, you know. You know, someone, you know, at at some locations might end up being the historic, you know, preservation area that we wanna add to it. But you also mentioned on the presentation that, you know, right now, you know, to add this and then later on talking about the old town, you know, guidelines, right? So what if that building is not within the old town guidelines?
Um so if a if a area in the future is not within old town, it would still have to. And it was decided that it should be added to this overlay, it would still be um. Subject to those old town design guidelines at the time that it uh went forward with the uh. You know, a project, if it had been added to overlay and then subsequent to that had a project, it would be subject to the old town design guidelines. Because of that possibility, I, you know, I, there was some discussion about whether or not to change the. Name of the old town design guidelines to just sort of historic preservation guidelines. For simplicity, we didn't do that right now, uh but that, you know, I thought it would cause some confusion, but. We could put, build that into the recommendation for the city council that, you know, let's reclass, namely simply historic preservation guidelines.
Yeah, you're reading my mind already, thank you, Alex, because I was thinking about that and I was thinking also sometimes historic. Preservation can be, you know, sometimes very subjective, you know, so, you know, my understanding of the old town guidelines, sometimes it's, you know, we be related to the. What we call the 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 older building, you know, uh and so, you know, you know, it will be a little bit difficult to. You know, think about applying some of those in other locations, so that becomes something, so, but that is not really focusing on this particular one. Uh you know, I I'm very appreciative about this, this is the only questions I have. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Simon. Uh Anne, do you have any co- uh questions for the staff?
Yeah, um just a couple, first of all, um are the old town design guidelines now online? Are they there now?
They should be, if they're not, they should be. So I will take a look right now.
Okay. Um while he's checking, um who is the zoning administrator, is that the planning manager?
That would be me.
Okay, great, that's that's good, and um just as a matter of record, who was on this subcommittee?
Uh it was Mayor Martinez Rubin and um and uh council member Murray. Or former council member Murray, at the time they were reviewing us, he was, he was on the council.
Right, okay, so Norma, Pete and Alex, you.
Yeah, and and uh. Dave was there and Tamara was there at times too, providing, you know, feedback and impact and and. Andrew attended one of the meetings as well.
But but to follow up on that question, who was on the original nineteen ninety seven uh when this was developed?
That I do not have the answer for.
All right, um so, Kaylin, uh just in thinking about the process, I, when I was trying to go through this. You know, basically thinking um, let me, let me see if I can summarize for myself and if this makes sense. Let me, let me see if I can summarize for myself and if this makes sense, um. So if a, if a property is in the Historic Preservation Overlay District. Then it will receive enhanced design review. If the zoning administrator determines that there are cultural resources on a property. Then that property or project will be subject to the Old Town Design Guidelines. Okay, and then if there are no cultural, if the, the zoning administrator determines that there are no cultural resources. Even if it's in the Historic Preservation Overlay District. Then they are encouraged to comply with the Old Town Design Guidelines, but not held mandatory.
Uh, correct. I, I would say the one slight caveat I would say is. Um, the cultural resource doesn't have to necessarily be on the. Parcel where the project is proposed, so, you know, if it's right next to a cultural resource, you know, it might have to comply, yeah.
Good, okay, so I guess my only, well, one of my questions is, is. So we're dealing with, within a, um, within a neighborhood, say. Um, for instance, and, and then the, the neighborhood that I live in, there's probably not any house in and of itself. That is a cultural resource, but it's because. A house is part of a whole, it's part of a neighborhood. That, um, whatever happened to that house would affect. You know, the, the look and the feel of the entire neighborhood. So my only question there is. I, I see language in the design guidelines regarding neighborhoods, but not in the overlay, in the ordinance.
Yeah, so the. Over, that definition of cultural resource and the. Overlay ordinance does mention that it could, you know, it just could be something that contributes to the significance of, you know, historic area.
Okay.
You know, that. You know, has, just to re, it's a defiable area possessing, you know, a concentration of historic or scenic properties. Um. Or thematically related grouping of properties or properties which contribute to each other. And are unified aesthetically by plan or, or physical development, so. Um, which, it maybe it's not as, um. Explicit as the design guidelines, but it sort of anticipates. Yeah, if there's a grouping of homes that maybe by themselves aren't anything special, but they're a grouping of a couple of colleges and, you know, they add something.
Okay, where did you read that?
That's in, uh, section seventeen point two eight point zero two zero. Um, which is, uh, cultural resources definition in its subpart B.
Got it, okay, good, all right, good.
And I will say just, you know, this is an, uh, something for the commission, um. That, you know, there is this step in here where now it creates. You know, someone's got to decide if there's cultural resource or not, um. You know, the planning commission could recommend to the city council, you know, let's take that out, let's just say. Everything in the Historic Preservation Order Overlay has to comply with the design guidelines. You know, that, that's up to the, um, commission, uh, that wasn't what the subcommittee wanted to do, but. I, I think there, you know, there's the full council and I think the subcommittee even was, would be open to, you know. Uh, additional feedback.
Okay, that, that's excellent. Thank you for pointing, because there was, um, just in, in your analysis and report, there was a definition of the, of the, um, cultural. Um, is something of cultural significance and cultural resource. And I, I, so I skimmed over it in the actual language and that's much stronger language, so, so I appreciate that. Um, okay, and, um. Then if the, then, then another process question, if the zoning administrator, um, says that. That a project does not have anything of cultural significance, can the planning commission appeal that?
Um, under the city's court rules, they. Can, I believe, um. Well, I guess the, the answer I believe is, I mean, I can double check, I believe. The answer is no, any, any member of the planning commission could. Um, appeal it, but they would have to pay the appeal fee, um.
So the zoning administrator has all of the power to make the decision then, is what you're saying?
The initial decision.
Well, someone can a- a- appeal it, um, or the zoning administrator could, um. You know, refer it to the commission to act.
Okay.
Let me just.
That's, that's. To me, I mean, no offense to you, David, Hannah. But that, that to me is, is a little bit scary that it's just one person. Who makes that decision and it. And if the planning commission were to, to feel differently, say, say for instance, we had a planning manager who was just. You know, not into any kind of historic preservation whatsoever. And was into modernizing everything and could make decisions that. The planning commission and the citizens would not agree with. Um, obviously that's not David Hannam at this point, but hypothetically, that could happen. So that's a concern I have about the process.
Um, and so I just checked our, our code and the code, uh. Says that a city council member can appeal a planning commission decision, but there is not similar language. Um, saying planning commission, uh, member could appeal the zoning administrator's decision. Um. You, you know, you certainly could in your capacity as a private citizen, you know, submit an appeal, but then you gotta pay a fee and, and, and all of that.
Well, Alex, I have a question.
Yeah.
I'll shoot this question out, is that what if, what if, um, what if decisions between decisions made by me and the design review board? Cause the planning commission does have a planning design review board that's made up of, what, three commissioners?
Yeah, I mean, so I, I, I certainly think that the. The design review board is for projects that go to the planning commission. So if it doesn't go to the planning commission, it, um, doesn't go to that design review board. I mean, I think you as playing commission, as zoning administrator could certainly confer with those people. But I think, uh, Commissioner Moriarty's concern is what if there's, you know, in the future, someone else who doesn't want to confer with. The design review board or, or the planning commission in gen- in general. And that is not something that's addressed by the ordinance, it, we could, um, add language to that effect saying, you know. The planning commission will, um, notify the city count, you know, the.
Well, the reason why, the reason why I'm asking that is because if I say, if, if the zoning administrator. What if the zoning administrator automatically refers it to the zoning review board?
Or, or it could.
It's a fact of the report.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're kind of getting into, to, um, discussion here, I think this is a good point, but. Um, but I think also it could go as a consent item, we never use the consent item on the, uh, agendas, maybe this would be a good thing where, um, any, uh. Any, um. Approval by the, the, uh, planning, uh, manager is, uh. It has to be approved by the, uh, planning commission on the, uh. Uh, uh, as, as the consent calendar, or something like that, but this is something that would be really good to discuss when we bring it up to the ordinance, to designing the ordinance.
Okay.
I think, I think you've appointed, I, I think you've identified a weakness in the, uh, the ordinance that needs to be discussed later.
Okay, all right, whenever, whenever it is that we discuss that, that's, those are, those are my only questions, so, um.
Sure.
Great.
Yeah, and just going, just going on, on that line, you know, we've been kind of discussing about individual properties, like right now we have the, you know, it's overlay that just. You know, never, nobody ever, we thought about exclusion rather than inclusion of other properties, but. You know, Pinole's got some rich history that I don't think is recognized. We got a, a, a Heisman Trophy winner that came from Pinole. We have, uh, a rock and roll hall of fame band that, uh, de- developed in Pinole and, and, you know, maybe. Uh, we need to designate their homes or where these, you know, as historic significance, you know, and I'm not exactly sure what the process to go about that. Is, but, uh, you know, I think those are, we don't have to wait for a future. Historic person, we, Pinole's already produced some historic people, you know? Um, and the, but one other question I have, concerns on page thirty-seven of the handout that we got. It's about ADUs, about the, um, about accessory dwelling units, uh. Um, especially building designers, I guess accessory buildings should be compatible with the main residential structure, they should be secondary of importance to the primary structure. Given how, um, the planning commissions around the state have been kind of. Had their wings clipped as far as, um, design review of ADUs. Um, is it something that we, you know, is it something that we can include in this ordinance where we can, um, have the accessory buildings, um. Being, um, compatible with the main resident, is there, you know, are we, are we crossing the, the, the law here at all?
Yeah, so, um, we. Can do that for accessory buildings, but not for accessory dwelling units. Um, and, and accessory dwelling units being, meaning residential.
Yes.
Units, um, because of state law, so under state law. Our design review for ADUs has to be ministerial. Which means, uh, you know, basically objective, and so something that's compatible, that. That's not an objective, uh, standard because compatible, compatibility is, you know, subjective.
Yeah.
So that is not something that, um, we would be able to enforce if it was an ADU.
Okay, that's, that's what I feared. All right, um, that's all I had. Is there any other, uh, questions for staff before I open up the public hearing and, um, bring it into public? Okay, I forgot my gavel today, so I'll have to.
Oh, sorry, just one more question.
Okay.
Um, just the, with the Old Town Design Guidelines, then all the shoulds become wills?
Yeah, for the, for the. Properties that, I mean, that's up to the commission and to make a recommendation as to that, um, or the. That is how I interpret it when it becomes mandatory, but if the commission feels it should be something different, um.
Okay.
Okay.
They, I mean, it's still, just as a comment, it's still, uh. Uh. You know, there's still a lot of, even if those shoulds become shalls, there's still a lot of, some of them still provide a lot of. Uh. Flexibility, you know, doors shall be substantial and well detailed, you know?
Well, maybe we need to come up with, um, you know, uh, uh, clarity as far as what will, should and shall mean.
Well, it's written, maybe we can talk about that when we get to the Old Town Design Guidelines discussion, because if there is a. The vocabulary is in there, but it was confusing to me as far as understanding what should means and so it. And so when you gave the slide that, that the guidelines become mandatory, what that says to me is that should become shall. And that it becomes a mandatory thing instead of just an encouragement.
Sure, yes, that's something to discuss. Um. Okay, is there, um. Any, anybody else have anything, any questions for the staff? Uh. If not, I forgot my gavel today, so I'll open up the public hearing. Mr. Hannum, do we have any, uh, comments from, uh, the outside, uh, public?
No, we do not.
We do not? Okay, then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the, uh, commissioners, uh, for discussion, okay, um. We have a couple of things that we wanted to discuss, we want to discuss the boundaries. Maybe we should take this one at a time, you know, rather than having everything, uh, go, so we. Had the boundaries of the district. The, um. Uh, um, you know, the, um. Decision.
Uh, appeal process.
Process, appeal process, decision, appeal process. Uh, we had the addition of individual. Of, of an additional, um. Properties. And. The will should. Shall. Any other things that we want to discuss?
I, I would just say that the, the last thing, the will should, shall, um, should wait till the, the second. Discussion when Commissioner Flashman, um, can come back when we discuss the design guidelines in, in depth.
Okay, we can do that. All right, so, um. Let, let's just, um, get a discussion on the boundaries of this, um. I'm gonna start off with this because I, I just kind of want to get the discussion flowing and, and I think that the boundaries were, were kind of like. Looking at the old specific planning area of Old Town and really don't, um. Really don't, um, meet the desire for historic district anymore, because, you know, we mentioned about the Gateway Project, is that still historic? I mean, it goes all the way to, um, down Appian, uh, not Appian, but San Pablo Avenue, well east of where. Anything of significance is. Um, you, you know, and I, and I, um, I, I, I just think that this boundary needs to be tightened. And I, um, and I think that the idea of calling it. And I think there's properties that are outside, uh, this boundary, uh, this overlay that could potentially be. Historic in value, so, um, I, I think we need to really take good, serious, um, discussion about. The boundaries. Uh, you know, how we, what we want to call this and all that kind of stuff, so let's, let's just, let's just focus on that item first. And, um, I'll let, um, let's see, let's see me go in reverse there, I think, Anne, um. You were the last, so you'll be, the first shall be the last, or the last will be the first.
Last shall be first. Ah. I. I don't know if I have anything proactive to say, um, um. So I'm going to. I think I'll. I'll respond to other people in discussion. Because there, I'm sure there are things that I haven't thought of, so no comment.
Okay. Simon, the second last shall be the second first.
Always the middle one. So my reactions is, you know, uh, that I, I do agree that I think we did, we should take a, you know, closer look of, um. The boundary, although. My other half of my brain are also telling me that because we actually did put in. You know, the, the, the wording of being able to add, right, additional locations. And I think the language should be also saying that maybe perhaps we could, was considered that somebody or someone can take out. You know, uh, some of the area in the later day, right, so that we have always the flexibility. Because I can see what the point of view from, you know. Uh, Commissioner Benzouli is thinking, like, hey, maybe perhaps we, you know, we would keep the gateway. On the other hand, well, why keeping the gateway? I mean, I, I can see both ways, so I guess it's. With, with that flexibility of being able to add. Or to, uh, you know, subtract. Uh, to me, give us a flexibility, so that we don't have to nail down in detail of, at this particular moment of, of what area is supposed to be. Uh. I still have questions, I know that we are not supposed to discuss this, you know, for the so-called Old Town guideline, because, but I've been thinking about like. The, you know, eventually they would tie into the, the wording or shit or, or should or whatnot here, because. I'm thinking like five years from now, you know, uh, Dr. Lee is gonna add additional to the building and his building is like, oh, so twenty-first century look like. And if his is being in the zone. Then, you know, whatever guideline that we end up like approving will be applying to that and. That is not even close to what his building is gonna look like right now, right? So how are we gonna deal with that? So that's why I think the flexibility of, of being able to put in. Or flexibility of being able to pull out in the discussions of. That particular current planning commission and get approved by the city, you know, council. That particular current planning commission and get approved by the city, you know, council will create a flexibility for us.
Okay, so you're, you don't think we should be changing the boundaries at all?
Well, I think we need to set up some initial boundary and I think this is actually the best way to do it right now. I mean. I think the boundary right now is okay to a certain extent. Again, being able to have the flexibility of adding in or pulling out. You know, um, you know, i- i- in any time, I think that will be, that will be great, if I might want to be.
Okay, um. All right, any other, uh, com-, uh, well, I guess you, you made your comment. Adam, um, your thoughts?
Um, well, pretty similar. Um, I, I don't really see any issues with the boundary as it currently stands and I do like the flexibility of you can add in and just subtract properties out. As in the future, even if it's on an isolated or, you know, kind of island basis. But I don't really, except for that clarification I had about where it was, the black line was on the map. Kind of, uh, mentioned between the railroad tracks, I didn't really have any specific comments other than that on the boundary. I think it's, it's fine as it stands.
Okay, um. Yeah, and, and you know, and part of the discussion about the boundaries is, is sort of the name too. Do we want to call it the Old Town, uh, as, uh, historic, uh. Overlay District or do we just want to call it just the, uh, uh, the historic overlay district, uh, because, um. Uh, possibly, you know, because we may want to, um, in- include other areas around Pinole that are not inclusive of the boundary. So. That's part of the discussion too. So, um, so except for, you know, wanting to clarify. The, that little black area, that little, that, those black lines that are kind of like, um, um, around, um. I don't know, Pinole's all twisted. I agree with, with, um, I forget who said it about how things are kind of twisted around in Pinole because I always. I still, to this day, even though I've lived in the city for like some thirty-five years. I still have a trouble figuring out where east and west and north and south are because things get twisted. Um. Um, I mean, I, I have to look at the sun, but at night I'm in trouble, you know, um. But I think that area that's, that would be, uh, adjacent to where that recreational vehicle storage area is, you know, it seems like that area is kind of like, uh. Not included in historic district. I think we need to have a discussion on that. Okay. Uh, any other comments, Adam?
Uh, no.
Yeah.
Actually, actually, sorry, actually, I'm sorry, this is a quick question. Um, can the name, um, more of a question for Alex, I think. Um, if it's called one thing versus another thing, whether it's the Old Town Design Guidelines or just, uh, you know. You know, historic kind of like, can then, whether they get, probably not be challenged legally, like if someone says, well, I'm not really part of the Old Town and I'm way out here.
No, I, I don't.
Apply to me.
That, that doesn't, um, you know, someone could always challenge their inclusion, but the fact that the, uh. Name, you know, a specific name wouldn't be a very strong basis to challenge it.
Yeah, um, we could, we could call it, it's Old Town and Historic Design Guidelines and that way we kind of still preserve the idea that Old Town is a, uh. It, it is a, is a separate entity in itself in this, in, in the, um, in the city and that, you know, there are. Other areas that can be historic too, you know, I, I kind of like that idea.
Yeah, to the chair, I actually kind of. Not thinking about it, I, I mean, it's opposite to, to this particular idea. I think. Historic preservation overlay. Should be a standalone thing that can apply to any locations of the city, whether or not they are in Old Town or not. We just happen to pick the Old Town locations as our start. So I don't think we should attach that Old Town name to it, number one. And number two, it's just like what I've been, you know, commenting in a way that. Perhaps there will be other locations in, in the future that we are going to add into this HO, HPO zone. And the Old Town Design Guide might only be fit into a certain location. Doesn't have to do with. Other locations that we need to apply. Perhaps the city need to think about, develop some other preservation guideline. To feed other locations and not just, you know, continue to think about the Old Town, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I'm thinking.
Um, I think, I think we're, we're, we might be making things a little too complicated. Um, you know, when we think of Pinole and maybe I'm just thinking too narrowly, um, we've always thought as of Old Town Pinole. As being that historic district.
Sure.
In a face, as opposed to. You know, the, the other side of the freeway, which, you know, out the valley. So we've got districts. And Old Town is one of those districts, you know, that we've got the three corridor specific plan, we've got those commercial districts and Old Town. Has its own flavor, its own sense, um, and so I. Personally, I would not want to lose that designation of the Old Town part of it. And so I'd be okay with adding. And, and again, this is, we're just making the suggestion to the city council. But adding, um, Old Town and Historic Design or whatever, but I don't want to lose that designation of the Old Town. Um, especially as these design guidelines themselves. Even though they are general and flexible, were designed specifically for Old Town, so. Um, even like, like I said, though, even though they are general, so personally, um, I don't want to lose that name.
I think you're right on that, Anne. I, I, I think, I think the, the idea that I had in flying and saying, uh, you know, the Old Town and Historic. Um, Design Guidelines, um, kind of captures everything.
Um, Simon, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
No, I was saying Simon because he's the one who said he wanted to take out Old Town.
Well, a- 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 again, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking out. Ten, twenty years from now, when some other locations might end up being. You know, put in as a, you know, historic, you know, preservation zone, right, overlay. If we are talking about it, okay, if we want to keep the Old Town and. The HPO, historical preservation overlay, then that might be a, that might be a alternate, that might be work out, okay.
Okay.
I just don't want to specifically saying that the historical preservation is only for the Old Town only.
Yeah.
Now, the, the, the wording here that we are seeing or what have, have we seen for the last, you know, thirty minutes. It's been kind of like being able to add on other stuff throughout the entire city, from Pinole.
Okay.
Which the ordinance allows, so.
So we got three, I guess, um. Adam, I, I guess, uh, what are your thoughts on this? Because I think we're kind of reaching a consensus there and changing it to Old Town and Historic Guidelines.
Yeah, I think I'm fine with it. Um, I. You know, I think there's language in the design line that talk about how things get treated individually, you know, in conjunction with the rest of the neighborhood, so. I, 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 I'm, I'm good with where we're written. I'm keeping the Old Town name, I think it's appropriate.
Okay, so I, I think we've kind of reached consensus on that and we'll, we'll pass, um, so I, I think we'll make that change, um, when it comes time to pass the resolution. Um, let's see, um. Then we were, the next thing was the, um, decision, what would he have, I had her, um. Am I writing anymore?
And, and just to clarify, Chair, so besides for the name, the, the consensus was to keep the map low the same?
No, I don't think that's the consensus yet, um. Yeah, I, I, because I personally think that, um, there are places that. Shouldn't be in the district and some places that are part of Old Town that are not in the district and specifically. I am not in favor of keeping the Gateway properties, um, in this historic district because, um. Uh, you know, because they're not historic anymore, you know? Um, similarly, I think we go down San Pablo Avenue too far, you know, all the way to where's it go? It goes pretty much all the way to where, um. Almost where Appian is, I think if I read this map right, you know, um. Yeah, it goes past Appian actually and, you know, the truth is that once you get past Oak Ridge, there's really nothing of historic value anymore. Um, and similarly, I think there are some properties like on Quinnen Street and, and Buena Vista, which I'm not sure. I, I tried to get a Pinole map to really get, I kind of thought I had one, but I lost it, but. I think the areas that go, you know, that are around Quinnen and you go up to, to Buena Vista where you have the, um. You know, that, that, that big property where. I, I, I've never really been able to confirm this, but I think John Fogerty used to have a music studio up there. I've not really been able to ever confirm that or not, but. I've heard rumors about that. And of course, you know, we have the, that area that's on Buena Vista that goes up there where the Property Brothers built their, uh. You know, did their work, uh, you know, that's, those are kind of, uh, historic, uh, houses up there. And, uh. So I, I kind of think that we should push the boundary around, um. Uh, Buena Vista and Quinnen out a little bit more to include that. It, it, it looks like the, that, the property that's the, you know, that, that's up on the top of the hill by the railroad tracks. Uh, i- if we could just jiggy jog that black line. Um. You know, to, uh, to include those areas, I think that would be really beneficial, you know, to, uh, in, in addition, so. Um, so what I'm really saying is I think we should shorten, you know, make, cut the boundary by. Henry Street, uh, to the east, if I, you know, um. Um, going up Pinole Valley Road and cut it by Oak Ridge, going down, um, San Pablo Avenue and then. Adding that little jiggy jog around, um, uh, Buena Vista, uh, in the, um. You know, that big, uh, house that's on the hill, um, those are my thoughts.
Question, is it possible to punt on making the boundary decision right now? Um, and accept the, I, I, I'm seriously, because this, this. Map is not clear enough, obviously, with what the chair is suggesting and thinking. I mean, is it possible? To okay the, the ordinance without having the exact boundary decided?
Well, we could punt it by making a stab at it and then letting the city council review the guidelines or, or the boundaries. But I, but I think our intent here is to kind of like. Um, you, you know, is to really look at the. Uh, look at the history of the city and not just, I, I think, I think we got trapped. When these boundaries were designed by looking at the, uh, the SPA for the, um, um, for the boundaries rather than really looking at where the history is.
That's, that's why I'm asking, Alex, if it's a deeper conversation, can we?
So we can, um, certainly, you know, I guess two things. One, yes, you can do, but the, the ordinance won't really have any. Impact if there's no overlay yet adopted, um. Uh, because there won't be anything to say, you know, you're within this zone, um. But you could certainly adopt something and, and, you know, expand it or change it later. Um, or, or, you know, uh, or also, you know, send it to the city council and say, we think you should, you know. Appoint a committee or have it sent it back to the planning commission to really do. Let's not do this broad zone. Let's, let's look at houses by houses.
No, no.
Um, I, I, you know, I don't really want to look at houses by houses.
Right, that was a, a stretch, but, you know, I don't, um. But I guess to the, the main question is, the ordinance can be adopted, but it has no teeth unless there's an overlay that applies.
Got it, got it, and so.
And that was the whole, and that was the whole issue back in ninety-seven was they adopted the guidelines, they just never adopted the historic overlay district to amend those sidelines.
Okay.
To put those deadlines.
So I might say, you know, this is, um, this was a similar conversation to what the subcommittee had and, you know. They had similar thoughts of why is it going all the way down San Pablo? And then there was, well, you know, the Green Lantern sign. I would hate for that to be lost or, you know.
It's, it's history.
You know, it's.
It's, it's Green Lantern signs, history.
Right, but I think that was an example of like, we wouldn't want something like that. And so it was like, okay, that, that's. Uh, oh, let's keep it as, as it sort of.
Yeah, I would, I would keep it as is. I think, you know, agreeing with that, you know, thinking about Norma and Peter's. You know, history also in this community and then, and then in the future, um. Thinking about, you know, adding in the hill, um, you know, David, like you were suggesting or adding in other places. Because the ordinance does allow that, but if we could spend. An hour or two hours trying to make that decision right now. Um, where we have, we have a beginning boundary to start off with. So that we can get this enforceable and then. You know, in the near future with the recommendation to the city council that, um, we maybe apply. You know, that we apply the boundary as is now. And that we have a, a further discussion, um, with another subcommittee in the future.
Okay, I think maybe, I think what we're looking for is wording that, that our, uh, when we pass this, uh, to the, um. Um, to the city council that we, we state about how we feel that the, um, the boundaries are too generous. And that, uh, we would recommend, uh, further action on reviewing the boundaries, especially with respect to. Including the gateway and, um, the, the, the extension of, um, uh, the, um. Overlay District past Oak Ridge on, uh, San Pablo.
Well, I don't, I don't know if I would agree with you there. I mean, I, I know that Adam had made the suggestion about, you know, the, including the gateway, so. I think there is further discussion there, but I don't know. You know, so I don't know if I would make it bigger or smaller, you know, at this point.
And the, the recommendation to the council could be, you know, we recommend you adopt this ordinance. And the commission will be, uh, further studying the, uh, the overlay zone and. And may suggest additions or subtractions in the future and. And the just back with the recommendation and then the commission, you know, on its own, uh, could just take that up. And, and, you know, decide to appoint a subcommittee or decide to do something. It doesn't have to be. A, you know, blessed by the city council, um, necessarily. Uh, for you to make those recommendations to the city council and then it's up to them to decide whether or not to accept them or not. Um, or you could also, you know. When we present this to the city council, we could see, see if they, what their feedback is, you know, because if they all think, no, we think this is perfect. You know, you may not want to, you know, spend your time doing it if the council thinks this is perfect. We don't want to make any changes. So I, I just meant that as a way of, I don't know if you want the, the. Keep it for yourself or to have a plan, the city council sort of appoints a new com- subcommittee. I assume they would want to just have the planning commission do it. Rather than, you know, interview people and, and figure that out, but, uh, that was a rambling answer. So.
Okay, um. All right, and, um, all right, I, I, I think we should just add a sentence that we can keep the boundaries as they are, um. Um. You know, and, but, but there is one thing I'm, I'm kind of working on a sentence here, you know, because I, I still think that there should be. We should put language in, um, either the guidelines or the resolution about. Um, air, you know, properties that are outside the overlay district. And so I was thinking about adding. Um, this sentence to the, the, the guidelines under one point one boundaries, which is on page two, um. And I have a quite wordsmithish yet, but I just kind of want to get the idea out there that. And this is that individual properties outside the Old Town Overlay District. Which have historic significance can be designated as part of, uh, this ordinance. So that we can, um, and, and then, then that begs the question about who, who at, who just, who, um, decides what's probably.
Yeah, well, so Chair, if I may, the ordinance itself, which is attaches an exhibit to the, the resolution. Says the planning zoning minister or planning commissioner, city council may initiate proceedings to add. The HPO, the, the historic preservation zone designation to a property.
Okay, so, so you're, you're, you're satisfied?
It already is a process to add and, and, you know, it would go, the way it would work is because it's a zoning designation is. It would come to a planning commission for a recommendation to then go to the city council.
Yeah.
Okay.
And put a chair, all I'm asking is just change that language to add or subtract. I mean, again, talk about that flexibility. I think that language would actually be good enough. That we do not have to go through tonight the, the map. Because that way will give us plenty of. Because that way will give us plenty of chances in the future. To discuss, agree or disagree with others, but able to create that map. Again, back to the city council for consideration.
Okay, I agree, I agree.
Yeah, me too.
So we'll add that and the others, the the other item that we want to discuss was the the approval. The process or the or the exclusion process, do we just? You know, limit it to the planning manager or are we doing, do we want to put language in there that it should? Include the design review committee or be consent item on the planning commission? Or approved by the planning commission, I think that gets to be too detailed to say. You know, to say, put it in the consenting, but do we just want to have one person making decisions?
Through the chair, my only concern about, I mean, I I share the same, you know, concern that, you know, Commissioner Moradi actually point out. On the other hand. Again, I'm just kind of juggling in between the two is that if we are going to be adding a design subcommittee, you know. To kind of make that call. Are we potentially delaying, you know, the process, you know, of, you know, getting through the building, you know, design done? Because, you know, again. You know, a lot of the complaints or kind of remember the the old situation was. It takes too long for Pino to actually process my request. Right? And then, you know. Now we are adding more layers to it because now we are seeing that you have to go through this guideline or the overlay. Now we are talking about like not only the design manager or the planning managers making the decisions, but now we have to schedule the subcommittee. And if we are all good enough, you know, as a planning commissioner in in the subcommittee, we will be able to schedule a time. You know, right now is the perfect timing, by the way, because everybody is locked into their home. But, you know, when everything's open up, then you got, there would be a chance that a month or two, we won't be able to actually get together. Because of all our work or whatever it is, so I'm I'm just concerned about it.
Perhaps through the chair, a solution would be not to make it the default, but just add language saying. A planning commissioner can appeal a decision of the zoning administrator to the. Planning Commission and so that way, if anyone's happy, it it just continues on its process, but.
Or 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 we can also do something like, you know, because usually the chair will have a lot of communications with the planning manager.
You think so?
Yeah, and so my thinking is, okay, well, if one set of eyes is not enough, perhaps we can set the second set of eyes. So that, you know, in this particular situations, perhaps. You know, the two days can talk and talk and think, okay, we want to put this building. Or these applications into a subcommittee for further considerations. So at least you have Dave, David, and then now you have the chair, which happens to be Dave.
So I would just say from a a legal perspective, you know, certainly the. Zoning administrator can consult with any number of of commissioners, but the. There's no way to make the chair have special powers. That other members don't have regarding like approval or designation, that sort of thing.
So I I like, I like, I'm sorry, Adam, were you starting to say something?
Oh, no, I was.
Yeah, I like, I like the more of the language that that you brought, Alex, that. A planning commissioner can appeal it to the planning commission. So what that means then is then then it automatically goes into potential design review, right? So that opens up that door. The only problem is, is how do we find out about it?
Well, that's all saying, you know, that that we. And 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 this isn't, this doesn't just apply, this doesn't just apply to this ordinance, it probably applies to a lot of decisions that are being made. And I I guess what we, you know. What we may need is to have the planning, the 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 planning director report any decisions that have been made as that. And and, you know, provide a list and and the commission can at that point in time decide to. Find out if there's any that they figure are need to be reviewed.
Especially deferrals, how would the consent calendar work? How would that portion work? You mentioned that, Dave.
Well, the consent calendar is is sort of like an automatic review, it's just not supposed to have some discussion. But the planning commissioners are are able to pull items from the consent calendar to be agendaized or discussed later in the. In the meeting. And and we've kind of abused the consent calendar because he always was with the. Just approval of the minutes, we always end up discussing those that blanks, which is why I'd like this idea pulling them out, but. Ideally, the consent calendar is supposed to have no discussion to with it, but each individual members of the commission. Have the ability to to say, I'd like that to be pulled and discussed as a separate agenda item.
So so that that seems like a reasonable kind of thing. I don't know, as a planning manager to, because there are some things that you don't see, like a a planning technician, you know, one of the building technicians might see. Say, for instance, if. You know, one of the houses, one of the Queen Anne's wanted to change their windows or something like that, that wouldn't necessarily go. To the zoning administrator, it would just be an over the, you know, an over the counter kind of permit thing, so.
So what's your thoughts? Well, I mean, we would set up a process, basically, what if the if and when the commission and the council adopts the map, we will then highlight every single address that is in within this map. So any that, if any pro, if any, if any project comes in and has one of those addresses, it'll be tagged. They'll be tagged as a historic property, at which point then it triggers the next set of reviews, so. Yeah, we already have, we just, we just have to define the map and and get all the addresses within that map, which we will work on. Once the map's approved and it'll take us probably about sixty days to get all those addresses in. There there will be, and and remember, I mean, we're only looking at projects that amend that. They're going to review the outside of the building, so anything inside the building, whether it's a hot water heater. Or something over the counter that you're not going to see, I'm not going to see as a director. It's only for those those projects that are amen or that are remodeling the outside of the buildings.
Okay, that's great, and then if we were to though. You know how you you gave us this approved or this a project list? I'm holding it in front of my face, right?
Yeah, I see.
If we had. That it was a part of a requirement of the ordinance that every month. That the the list of, you know, those things that were brought up that. I I don't know how how it works, you can help us flesh that out?
The the problem is, the the problem is going to be this, is that. The problem will be that if a project comes in, okay, and let's say it's a house on John Street and they they want to take out, they want to review all their windows, okay? This point, the way that ordinance reads right now, it would kind of gets flagged on John Street, it comes to me. At this point, I'm saying, you know what, at this point, you know what, it's it's not changing this, it's not changing the heart of the building. It looks like it's okay, boom, it's gone, right? I I I reviewed it, I've signed off on it and it goes. Well, unless that project has additional reviews by other by other areas, then that project's going to get a permit and it's going to go built. Okay, so what we're gonna have to, if, so any process that we add for this area wills, I I don't care what you say, it will slow down. Projects in the area because it has to go through a review from me and if I decide that. At least at this point, you know what, this is a big one, I'm I'll take it to the commission. Then it's going to add additional time to it, so there there's no way that I can, I I mean, there's, it's going to be very difficult to add. A like you see it a month later, I mean, I could review this thing in January first, you don't get it till January twenty second. And that project's already gone, they're already starting construction. So we would have to then red tag it, stop it.
I guess I I I agree with David's point that there would be delays, right? Like, cause we would have to just not issue, the building permit just couldn't be issued until the planning. Commission had its review and so we would, it would cause long delays, because, you know, David would have to tell them. Well, this looks good, but can't get you on that planning commission agenda for a month.
Also, there is a process, there is a process for the zoning administrator, there is a zoning administrator process to have meetings and scheduled meetings and all that kind of stuff. Which I could do with these particular projects that I could do.
I think the argument against that, David, is that it can do and will do are two different words.
No, what I'm saying is that that there is, there is a, in the code, in our Muni code. There is a section in our Muni code that talks about. I can get to it. About the zoning administrator and what is required for a zoning administration meeting, so that if the commissioners. If the commissioners want to be a part of that meeting, they could be as public citizens. I'm looking at it right now.
What 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 I want is I want there to be some accountability. And that's all, and so that it's not, not that. I don't trust David Hanum himself, it's not him, it's the position.
No, no, I I totally understand, I believe me, I totally understand.
And and I was, I was heading right where you were at, I was thinking like with the project status list, there'd be an equivalent list that here, these are all the projects that came up, they were in the HPO. And it was determined they didn't require any further review because they didn't have cultural significance or or it was just the windows. That, you know, Dave's got, and that would be good, but to Dave's point, then, yeah, if we got this list and it was. A couple of weeks later, those windows are already in, or we don't want to hold up the guy that just wants to put in new windows and make it start a historic, you know, and not affecting anything. But maybe all it is is just a list that every month that says. Hey, these are the projects that came up, they're in the HPO, they were deemed not to have any, you know, cultural significance or anything. And it's just acknowledgement of what we didn't see maybe. So in the future, we can, we can always amend the language in the future to be on the lookout for other. Projects that maybe fall into cracks, maybe.
Well, yeah, yeah, I I hear what you're saying and if, but maybe, but maybe. Maybe Old Town Pinot is special enough that. You have delays. You know? Because if we deem that that is an important value of ours. Then then we say, well, then you live in here, you live in this district. Be prepared to, you know, it's going to take a little bit longer, I mean, I'm sure in other communities, that's the case. I don't want to just have to shove things through and I, you know, we might even have discussions about what's an appropriate window. So. I would. Push more towards it being delayed and there, you know, being. But I don't know how to write that into the ordinance and we may not agree on that, so.
Put that into the ordinance, frankly, what makes the most sense is to just say. All design review. For projects in HPO goes to the planning commission, because then the planning commission, I mean, if that's your goal. I mean, certainly causes delays, but then it's clear, it's upfront. You know, it's going to get scheduled, a planning commission meeting and. The planning commission can do the design review and the, you know, can make the determination about the. The cultural resource and do the design review all at once, rather than. Hey, you know, let's say the planning commission. That zoning administrator makes the decision and then it goes to planning commission. And they kick it back to the planning commissioner now to say, yeah, you're wrong, it is a historic resource, redo your design review. And it's like a back and forth, but that clearly, you know, creates a delay and. You know, additional staff work. But, you know, it seems like slightly less work to do it all at once at the planning commission than sort of a ping pong back and forth.
Yeah, maybe that's the way to go because, you know, there there is a a value increase in being a historic building. At least I hope so. So I think that that goes with the territory, that if you're, if you're in a historic. Area that.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah. So, so Alex, your language, you're just saying that all, that you're just going to include that all. That every project show in the historic overlay district shall be. Sub subject to planning commission design review, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and, you know, I think that would be. A reason to, in the future, the planning commission sort of shrink the area of overlay when they take. This look to make sure that this isn't, you know, a massive zone, that's going to be projects that don't need to do that, but really a small zone. But I, you know, I I think. You know, what I'm saying is this is certainly will cause delays in 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 staff work. So I don't know, you know, the city manager, for example, may may, you know. When we present this to the planning, let's say, council may say, well, my recommendation is that. This is just going to be a huge burden or a huge whatever, and so just so the commission knows that, you know, that. The city council obviously values the commission's appointment, the opinion, and so they want to hear this. But there, I I just want to, you know, there will probably be. A recommendation, I would imagine from from the city manager or Tamra to just be like, this is. This is going to be a huge burden on staff to do this extra level of review.
Yeah, I I I, but, you know, the 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 city council, you know, that we have to remember our our. Part in the process is that the city council is ultimate.
Yes, no, absolutely, I just didn't want the commission to think that, oh, we, you know, we said one thing at the. Planning commission meeting and then we went behind, you know, changed the.
No, of course not, because it's, you know, it's just a suggesting, but I'm I'm not sure how much more. I guess, I guess the the thing is, is the work in making the decision or the work in preparing. The presentation or, you know, to give to either the design review board of the planning commission or to the planning commission, right? So you do the work of actually making the decision or preparing it, right? So.
Right, and and I don't, you know, it may not be that much, I just want to. You know, I think that wasn't a a path we had thought about really, so then think about what that work. Extra workload might be in it, you know, there, it may not be, maybe there aren't that many projects a year that come through in this area.
Probably aren't.
So.
No, they're all come, once they adopt a zone, then they all come.
Well, that's, that's what, that's what I would, I would. And Simon, I haven't heard you, you know, speak to this yet, but I would prefer that we make some kind of. Suggestion like that to the city council. That there be more accountability instead of just one zoning administrator making that decision. And there being no recourse after that.
And I think we should be more in a suggestion, I'd say, let's let's put in the language that Alex just suggested about the, you know. And and if the city council doesn't like that, they can then come up with the the what they want to come up with, I mean.
And and just the language that I'll make the change and then we can, it will be presented as the, an option to the city council. Right now, it says, for a project proposed on a property located within HBO zone. Prior to the occurrence of a design review, the zoning administrator shall determine whether a project would result in change to a cultural resource on a property. Well, I'll just change that to say, you know. Concurrent with design review, the planning commission shall determine. Blah, 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 you know, shall determine whether a project will result in changes to a cultural resource on the property, you know. Administrative design review for projects within the HBO zone shall be conducted by the planning commission.
Okay, that sounds good. Remember that language, because we're going to have to include it in the ordinance. Remember that language because we're going to have to include it in the ordinance when we come. And I'm going to just refer to the Alex language. Okay?
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
So I think we've, um, we've done that, we've done the boundaries, the design and then the additional, an addition of additional properties are already covered, so. We kind of have consensus with that. And I don't know if right now we need to make a recommendation on that before we look at the design review, review.
Yeah. So what I would, um, the, just the, the recommendation would be that the. Planning commission recommend approval to the city council of an ordinance adding chapter seventeen point two eight historic preservation overlay to the municipal code. With the change in language to section seventeen point two eight point zero five zero.
Okay.
That, that, yeah.
Motion by Commissioner Moriarty.
Okay, and what about the boundaries? We've decided that we're just going to let the boundaries be as they are and. And, and, and suggest further review at a later time?
Actually, yeah, and we were going to add the, um, to seventeen point two eight zero four zero. To add or subtract.
Oh, right.
From the HBO zone. That's what Simon had suggested.
Okay. Okay, you got all that, Mr. Hannam?
Yep.
Okay, so that's the motion. Second.
My second, Ed.
Okay, Adam seconds, uh, any discussion? I, uh, bring, bring the matter to a vote. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we just do a quick roll call? Sorry, it's part of the.
Okay.
Requirement for.
Okay, remove me. Okay, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Hannam?
All right, thank you. Commissioner Benzili?
Aye.
Commissioner Wong?
Aye.
Commissioner Moriarty?
Aye.
Chair Curran?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, great. So now we go through the second part of this, which is to review the design guidelines?
Yeah, so, um, and Commissioner Flashman, you can.
Come back.
Come back. Uh, and so we don't have to rehash this because I, I believe Commissioner Flashman was probably. Listening, but you know, these, these, uh, design guidelines are, are. Were adopted in nineteen ninety seven, but haven't been applied in recent years. They're not mandatory by their terms. The goal is that they will be mandatory, um, for projects in the, the HBO zone, so. Depending on, you know, that's sort of up to the commission to decide, hey, we, we want to change the sh- shoulds to shalls. Just to review right now. Guidelines with the word should are intended to be applied as state lines, uh, which. I, I, I don't know exactly what that means. It's a confusing term, so it, uh. And guidelines with the word encouraged are desired but not mandatory. Where it says discouraged. Should be strictly adhered to and guidelines using the word must are based on existing regulation that must be followed. So we, you know, depending on what the commission wanted, we could clarify that should really means shall. Should, um, which I, it appears was the intent of the original design guidelines, but it. As I think, uh, some of the commissioners have pointed out, it's a little confusingly worded.
Why, we do define what the language means, you know, I mean, that's, that's, I think that's the, the key, you know, as, as you pointed out, you know, three point one does, does define the language.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, let's look at that and see if we want to change that language, you know, the language of that section or not. So just to repeat, uh, guidelines which employ the word should are intended to be applied as stated. I mean, that's, that's really a shall, right?
Yeah, and, and.
And, and guidelines using the word encouraged are desirable but not mandatory. That's pretty clear.
Yeah.
Disgory should be. Uh, the word discourage should be strictly adhered to. Guidelines using the word must are based on existing regulation that must be followed. I'm just repeating it. I think it's pretty clear.
Well, okay, so, so let's look at an example, okay, an example, just to see how, how we do it and because I went through this. If we look at page thirty two in the design guidelines, and by the way, um, David Hannam, did we find out if these are online now?
They are, they are not online. They are just part of a staff report, so I'll be talking to Justin tomorrow. They, they, they should have been online last week, so.
They should have been online, yeah, because we asked that last month.
Yeah, I know. So I, they will be on, they will, they will be online somehow tomorrow.
Okay, great.
So we'll get that fixed.
So, so let's look at an example, um, on page thirty two. Number, number three, um, right here, and what I was thinking of was the example is the Casa Amada. You know, the artisanal garden?
Sure.
So if we were to see this, it, to read number three, new development should respect existing structures in the immediate area. Through the use of similar materials and proportions and the avoidance of overwhelming scale and visual obstruction. So. That, when, when you read that, you read should, it's like, well, it's supposed to, even with the, the language. In, on page ten. So it should respect. I don't know, it's not to me the same thing as it shall respect.
So this would be part of code, I mean, can we use similar language that the building code uses as far as should, shall, must, those type of things? In the building code is fairly specific on what you're supposed to do. Use similar word privilege?
I like that idea because that's what I've been doing, right? So I think that is a clear definition of, uh, for the building code of, you know, what those are meaning to. But again, I'm, I'm just concerned about like, you know, again, this old town design review guideline, you know, when we put it in. Well, I, I, I guess it's, it's, we will truly apply to the entire zone. And we know that the zone can change, right? And so if we are saying a must, for example, or a shall must, you know, example, are we creating some sort of, uh, difficulties for, um, uh, applicant? You know, if, if that particular building, it's not really. It's in the zone, but not, you know what, I mean, not, 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 not thick enough. I, I'm just raising the questions here.
Yeah. And.
But I think the, the language, it like, provides for that, so should, should incorporate represent, representative character of the surrounding area. That doesn't necessarily mean the entire historic overlay that means that specific area. So if it's part of, you know, a different area, not, you know, right next to the, um, Old Bank of Penole. For example, then. It can just be similar to the, you know, the place next to it. Versus has to be similar to the bank of Penole. Does that make sense?
That absolutely makes sense, and that's true good, the original discussions, Alex, like you point out, that some, some. You know, uh, a subcommittee member was talking about, should we change that review design guideline to not say Old Town? Right? Because then, then you can apply to anywhere. I, I agree with Sarah, that, that, that now you can apply it to anywhere, shall that zone be larger or smaller?
I think it also depends on how you read it. So this specific one says the characteristics of the surrounding area. I don't know. It doesn't specific, it'd be different if it said the characteristics of Old Town.
Okay, well, I, I, I guess, I guess the idea of making the language consistent with building codes. Is, uh, is, it was a suggestion. Could either Simon or Adam elaborate on what the building codes, uh, language they use? Do they use should, shalls, maybes?
Uh, it's been a while since I've actually read it, but I remember, it, it does specifically say, you know, you shall do this and there's certainly, you can and can't do, and it's very. Clear, or it's not subjective.
For the, the good of, uh, through the chair for the commission, the building code defines should to say, mean, recommend. And shall to mean, just that, shall to mean, uh, shall denotes a mandatory specification or requirement.
I think a good, another good example is just on the same page, um, site character number two. Structures which are historic or are otherwise distinctive should be preserved and incorporated into developmental, development proposals. That sounds very different with a shale, with a shall versus should, kind of sounds like a recommendation. I think it would make sense to change all of the shoulds to shale, shalls, can't say that word. Because that's what is implied, or that's what the goal was of the.
Yeah.
And, and then we could go through and kind of, I don't know, we want to go through all of the shoulds and be like, oh, should this one be a shale, shall, or should it be a recommended? I don't know, we want to do that, but.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can also argue here on page twenty one. That that particular guideline is kind of specifically talking about a storefront, you know, then, then if we all change it to, to, uh. To shell, then, then, well, I mean, again, not every basic building has a storefront, so how are we going to deal with that?
Well, I, I. Well, definitely commercial and residential though. I mean, isn't that in the commercial section?
Exactly. So I, I guess, you know, is, is that a general language on top of this guideline saying that? You know, certain item is only going to apply to a certain types of building or whatnot?
Well, I think that is. The, the recommend, the guidelines themselves provide for that. But I, I think if, if the commission wanted, the, the course of action would be perhaps to. Make a, you know, change three point one to just say, you know, every reference to should. Shall, shall be interpreted as. Shall me, you know. Now it's stuck on that, but, uh, the use of should in this. In these guidelines has the same. Is mandatory and has the same definition as the word shall. And, and perhaps that's a little clearer than what's in three point one now.
Yeah, I, I kind of, I, I kind of like what you're saying, Alex, I think there'd be shell or say that this is what's the intended. Like, that's the intention, because like a design guidelines, when you really dig into them, give a fair amount of subjectivity to the actual. Individual design guideline. It doesn't say, you know, every building has to have a storefront. It's like, hey, if you have a storefront, this is generally how we want to do it. So there's flexibility within the guidelines, but I think there are things that are should, should be shalls, because those are the things that we are important to the, important to us.
Yeah, so, for example, three point one, right now says guidelines which employ the word should are intended to be as applied as stated. We changed that to say guidelines which employ the word should are intended to be mandatory. Are intend to be mandatory.
That's because, I'm sorry.
I think it's maybe just a little clearer to say, uh, as, as mandatory rather than as, as stated. Or, or guidelines which employ the word should are mandatory.
Sure, that makes sense. That, that, that's the, that's the place to change it.
That's, I, I, I'm still struggle with my example of Dr. Lee, Dr. Lee, you know, buildings here. And again, you know. Yes, I know that we just basically say that the, 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 the map can change, right? You know, you can subtract that building.
Well.
He, he can always come back and within a year or two applying for an addition to the building that is attached to that current building. And because we approve that this is a full guideline, then going back to you, Adams, is, you know, his building is going to be commercial. And none of those, none of those are going to be applied to his building because of the design. So what are we going to do? Are we then delay his process by going back to the city council of changing the map? Are there any particular language that have, you know, given authority for, you know, the design manager or whoever? That kept out for that building because of its specific design or the look and feel of the building itself?
So the design guidelines are. I guess maybe it's a good. Example, like, you're. You'd only be applying it to the addition, and I don't know if there's specific things in here, but like. Yeah, I, I'm not sure whether.
Yeah, I mean, Simon, I hear you're just saying, I think, you know, for that instance, you wouldn't then, like, you wouldn't make, like, leave and put a storefront into that. Section of the building, because now we say, hey, you have, you shall have a storefront and, you know, a specific, all of a sudden go along the storefront. You just, it also says you wouldn't want to clash with other things, so you wouldn't want to enforce something that now has to be done that clashed with the existing building that's already there. You'd have to do some, there's, it'd be some sensibility about what gets applied. I guess. So that it doesn't contradict the rest of the building.
I, I, I'm thinking like, for example, let's just say that if, if my example did happen, okay? I'm thinking about the process, okay? So maybe the first step is that. David will have to submit this particular request, whether or not they are starting the design or whatnot. To the planning commission, say, hey, there's a desire to put an additional, uh, uh, you know, uh, chunk, you know, of, of, of buildings to Dr. Lee's design, for example, okay? And then, you know, maybe there's a language or somewhere that we can have a, the planning commission will have a discretion of. Approved, uh, you know, I'm just thinking aloud, you know, the, the, decide not to follow. The certain guideline, you know, you see what I mean? You know, like, because otherwise you're going to waste the, 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 the applicant time of going through the guideline and end up like that is. Not going to. That is intention, I, I think.
Well, Simon, there's, there, the, it, the guidelines actually address that. I mean, if you look at page, I mean, that, your specific example on page forty two. It, it talks about additions and contemporary design for alterations and additions to existing properties should be. Should not be discouraged when such alterations and additions do not destroy significant historical architectural or cultural material. So I think that's where that discretion is. I mean, what do you apply to it? I mean, you, you. You're not going to tell them to build something that looks like old, you know, the old bank building. Attached to it. So, so I think there's a lot of reasonableness. And as was said before, flexibility in these guidelines that would help in that design review. So I don't think it's. Pushing it too hard.
Well, and, and the other thing we have to decide is it, it's a historic, if it's a historic structure. And most of, most of, most of these guidelines talk about historic structures. The new construction, I mean, that, kind of that, that, that ship left the dock in a sense, because it got approved. And to go back and get it now, if they were to, if they were to add an addition. Would be a little bit, and, and use it, and use that addition to the, it, it wouldn't make sense. So I mean, page forty two makes a pretty good point. If it's a contemporary design. And it's, but it, but it's consistent with the design it has, and it's not something wild in that, at that, at that point. You know, we can also, there's another, the other thing is too, is that. You know, but besides the actual structure of the building, color can also come into play in this too as well. So. There might be some ideas where we might be able to say, you know, where we're not necessarily going to change the design of the building, however, you know what? If we change the color of it, it could accent some of the buildings better in a different, in a different, in a different way. So. There are ways, there are ways to distinguish, uh, and there are other ways to bring a building to match an area. Uh, especially with these. Uh, especially with these contemporary buildings that are, I mean, because basically. All the shopping centers are contemporary buildings. They're not, they're not historic buildings. They don't match any historic renderings that that have been in Old Town panel. The coloring is a little, some of the colors are in a sense. And that's something how you would attack those newer buildings is that more into a color to create a theme within downtown. And that's kind of what, you know, I mean, so in my experience in these, in when we're doing old towns and we're doing design guidelines. And we're doing those types of things is that you're looking for a theme, and if that theme can be met by colors. And be matched by colors and you can bring an area like together. So where you might not be able to change the actual building type. You might be able to get them on the other side of it and say, well, yeah, but you are required to use, you know, gunmetal gray and uh. You know, forest green, because that's within the historic, that's within the Old Town guidelines, and you can bring it in that way as well. So there are other ways to, you know, apply these guidelines in a sense, depending on what the building is. And and that, and that, when we talk about flexibility, we'll need that flexibility. Because there are buildings within the historic district that were built in the sixties and seventies and eighties. So we're 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 going to need some flexibility. So I I've always tried, if I, if I can't make a building. You know, comply with, you know, the actual, you know, it's got to be bricks and it's got to, or it's got to have awnings or that type of stuff. I try to bring it all in with color, because sometimes color, and then you can see a theme when you come into that area. So that's another option that is available, and it's available through the guidelines as well. So I mean, that's kind of how, like, we did in Angels Camp, you know, we had in our downtown, of course, you had the eighteen sixty buildings. Then you had the nineteen twenty buildings and the nineteen, and the nineteen forty five buildings. But they all were under the same color, color scheme. So, you know, you still can match them that way. And then they followed, they followed their. Um, uh, through the uh Department of Interior guidelines and and all that. They were required to follow their own style. So the Art Deco Hotel that's in downtown. Anything that to be added on to that would be an Art Deco. Uh, uh, side or with the buildings across the street where they're built in eighteen forties. Then, yeah, then we have to have, you know, build it similar to that. So. So the, so there's other ways on how to kind of uh attach these, and that's what these guidelines allow us to do. So. Um, to kind of get to match those buildings to the theme or to the air, the timeframe that they that they are. Hopefully that added a bunch of confusion to everything, too.
No, actually, I think it clarified. So it means that everything that is built now remains integral to itself.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I think it's taken into context with everything that's around it. So even like the gateway stuff, that would all look like. The gateway stuff, it wouldn't look like something different if we can see since, cohesive with what's there currently.
Which does it now, but.
Well, no, that, but 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 we can do, but but we can do, if if. If there was an addition, if there were some, if there was an addition of a certain amount, then we could come back and say. Hey, based on this, the Old Town guidelines that are now in effect, you know, here's the color scheme that you're going to have to match to bring it all into into play. So.
It's got to be mint green.
Well, whatever. So. Depending on what, and I, I don't know, I don't think there. I don't, I don't know if the city adopted a color scheme in the guidelines or not, but I mean, in most cases.
No.
Most, most paint, most paint lines have uh have a historical palette. Um, that you can, that you can draw from. I know in Angels Camp, we adopted the Sherman, I think it was Sherman Williams or Bear. They've had a multitude of colors that quote considered were historic in nature, so.
I I don't think we have that, because otherwise I would have had push of pushing out all the pink color. I'm just joking.
I think it just talks about like no pastels and no neons and things to avoid, but not necessarily a color.
So can we, can we make an agreement on that language change then? Going, getting back to what originally started us on on this, this path. Should, shall be interpreted as mandatory.
Yeah, and I think, as long as, you know, that change of language is still providing the uh flexibility on that particular front and and. I personally, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Okay.
I, I just have one quick question on it. So will we make this mandatory? Is, is there a supersedeance as far as if we say something like, hey, you got to have X percentage of windows or you, you know, this, that and the other? And it potentially contradicts what Tower Twenty Four and Energy Calp may say. Is there a supersedeance that that the telephone, telephone would still supersede this if there was some sort of conflict?
Well, we would have to go probably to the historic building codes at that point, so which would would allow us to. Would probably not have to check with Alex on that one, but the sort of building codes would probably allow us to 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 not have to do those major. Code changes in terms of the, um, but that's something that we'd have to look at.
Okay.
Okay, so are we can, are we uh, I want to change that language to mandatory? That consensus?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, um, so um, what else do we need to discuss about this? Anything else in the document that needs to be addressed?
I have a, I have a number of comments that we're forgetting to do a specific language on the specific design guidelines.
Sure.
Um, page um fourteen, under section A point three. Uh, which has a maximum building height of three stories after at forty feet, maybe, or remitted if the third story volume is enclosed by a pitched roof. Do we, it seems like three stories is actually fairly, I mean, that's ended up being almost, you know, forty, fifty feet tall. Is that's a fairly tall building. Um. You know, should we say something like, you know, that height of a building is not really allowed? Or discouraged from going that vertical?
We already said that the maximum building height should be two stories and thirty five feet. And then we offer an exclusion, saying a maximum building height of three stories and forty feet may be remitted if this third story volume. Is enclosed by a pitched roof, you know, so we pretty much do set the limit and just saying this is an exception if you can, uh. You know.
If you make the architecture work, it's still fairly tall, but it's still a fairly tall building. I mean, for contrast, everything else that's around there.
Um, I I leave that to the architects, something to figure to, you know, because height, height is a problem I have a real hard concept with.
You know, literally forty feet is like uh one and a half single story house nowadays with a pitch roof. You know, like, I'm looking at my house, for for example, you know, I I think I'm hitting about like uh. Twenty feet, eighteen feet, actually. So um, so it's literally like three story with a pitch roof, hitting about like, what, thirty six feet? So forty feet is actually not too bad, considering that a lot of the old town structure has. You know, especially go closer to the central area of the old town, the buildings are taller. Uh, I do have the similar concern as, as, I again, if going back to the map itself, right? Uh, what if someone is going to build something right next to a crossroad of Green Lantern and doing a little tiny skinny building with three story high pitched roof? You know, but then I think, you know, if that's ever going to submit to us, we can always look into it from a design standpoint, whether or not we agree.
Well, you know, knowing that number three, at the end of it, it says note of variance may be needed to be obtained for, to allow building to be more. Two stories or thirty five feet.
I it's just, I I mean, there are a couple of different zoning districts in. Within this old town, but you know, the typical zoning district. Um, has a height limit of of thirty five feet. There are a couple that have more than that. Um, the.
The specific plan has Old Town at forty feet or three stories, but there's a special height requirement. So after the second story, I think it has to be cascaded or it has to be, um, it has to be set back. Um, special height requirement, yeah, it has to. Um, like be set back like forty five, forty five degrees or. Um, so it has like a quote of vision triangle. I'm looking right now.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think what I've read, you know, so far, again, is with the specific plan, you know, anything going to three. I mean, we have a lot of those examples at the, really closing to the Simpable, you know, at the Cannon area. Where they 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 do the stepping or they do a very high pitched roof. That's kind of, kind of representing back into the Victorian style house. And 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 I don't think that it's going to be a issue again, you know, but again, the the old town. I mean, one of the thing that Sarah you point out, you know, on the other section is to try to map. Try to be considerate, right? You know, uh, to your surrounding. And I think that is our freedom to say, hmm, even though you can do this, but.
Right, okay, fair point.
Matching, yeah.
Okay, fair point. Um. On page fifteen, item four, uh, the blank walls visible from a public place may be allowed if the walls treat architecturally with some sort of. Graphic, um, I think that should be discouraged. Um, I mean, or at least we go through an extensive design review for what the architectural treatment is or for some sort of planned wall graphic.
My, my husband would agree with you totally.
Actually, same here. I don't like blank walls. I don't like graphics, so. No, I think I, that is something that we need to somehow change it or eliminate it.
Yes, like I think it says blank walls or it shouldn't add face public creature, maybe it's must add. Or shall not, like, so it will be now shut out.
Yeah.
Um, items, section, or page sixteen, section C point two. Uh, new building should contain a three parts, a base, a midsection and a top. It's more of a discussion thing, but is that limiting to a particular style of building? Maybe that should be an encourager to have that kind of articulation in the design, but not necessarily becoming a shell that maybe limits. You know, the architecture or it sets us to a certain time.
I think that's a good point, Adam. I think that um, it's hard to define what the, what the rhythm of the surrounding building. You know, that that's kind of a nebulous thing, so I think it makes sense to say encouraged.
Good, what, what uh item is that? Sorry.
Page sixteen.
Sixteen.
C point two.
It says new building should contain a three parts, a base, a midsection and a top.
Got it.
Uh, okay, on the difference parts. For figure eight.
I mean, I think it should, the the architecture should match whatever's going on, consistent with the rest of the area, not necessarily of a specific style.
Let's, let's say, for example, okay, let's say, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take example antlers. You know, I know this one property, it's a pretty big building, right? I know, that's not a good, let me, let me pull up a building. Um, three story, we don't have a three story building here. Um.
What about the old bank building? Is that two stories?
It's, uh, yeah, it's two stories. It has two stories in the back. Yeah, it kind of rises up in the back. It's all under one roof. But if we build it, let's say the next building wants to go a story taller. Then we would take a look at the bank, next to the bank, and maybe one of these two styles would fit that. Where they kind of stair step it up and show the top, the middle. That would be similar to the bank.
Yeah, and again, that can be resolved by saying that, you know, again, going back to what Sarah you pointed out. Hey, you need to look at ma- matching or corresponding to the building next to you. So even if we don't restrict this, even if we take this out. And we don't, we would change the word, you know, should, you know, uh, to to encourage, right? Uh, they have the flexibility of designing something and we always have the enforcement to say, nah, match the bank.
Yeah. Yeah, I I I kind of think that word should be changed to encourage too.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see, what does everybody, what does everybody think?
We're looking at page sixteen, C two. New buildings are encouraged to contain three parts. Is that?
Yes, that is what we're. And I think that makes sense. I think it makes more sense for it to to match the surrounding area than um. To go to this specific guideline.
Yeah, I I think that is the golden key, right? You know, you know, if we don't, unless we have a style that we all agree on or city council like it. You know, to 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 encourage the architect to be able to, you know, be able to not restrict them, but be able, allow them to. Make something happen, but still have that kind of guideline of matching, right? That I think that would be good enough.
Then how did we end up with Dr. Lee's building? Wow.
Good questions.
That's, that's, that's a different discussion, but I I don't think it's what we intended, to be quite honest with you, but that's a different discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead, Alec or Adam, you had, you you, you're, you're on a roll here. What's next?
Oh, uh, page nineteen, items four and five, under building materials. Um, it's a list of appropriate building materials, including more stone, stucco brick, et cetera, and inappropriate building materials, including, you know. Siding aluminum, you know, curtain, you know, reflector glass, et cetera, et cetera. Not that I'm necessarily. Um, agreeing that any of the inappropriate ones should be moved to the appropriate list or vice versa. But I just want to make sure that that list has been, is that updated or is that current to what we currently kind of have in these areas? I mean, if we're trying to maintain some consistency, but then we tell someone, hey, you can't put medical wood siding, and it's a should or a shall. You know, should those be back to encourage or should the list kind of not be there? And it says. You know, it should be consistent with the area.
A lot of it consistent with the area, but like, if you have on any of the houses, at least in this old town specific area. If you put vertical siding on them, which some have, because it wasn't ever enforced. It it detracts totally from. The neighborhood. I guess the thing we need to think of these as being um guidelines for the architect. For the designer and things like that and certain things. And this is where the problem becomes when we extend the old town, old town guidelines to. Because these are specific, these are.
Well, I mean, the whole, I mean, the really, the whole, just in, as a store preservation was. I mean, Old Town really was the center of all of this, the center of all of this. There are, there, I mean, the, I mean, that's, that's where it was in nineteen ninety seven, that's where it was in two thousand and ten. Uh, when they developed the specific plan, the old town be old town. Um, and so, and these guidelines actually went far, farther than anything else. Because they defined what Old Town was. And so that's, so, yeah, I mean, can we use this on the other side? You know, if if we include a house or if we include somebody, then yeah, then they're going to have to be abided by the guidelines. But this is really mainly these, 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 these guidelines are for old town.
Yes.
So there's no question about that.
Can we add a language here on this particular page or maybe even for the page eighteen on item F? That's specifically, a- again, if we are going to change the the guideline names to something else other than Old Town. We can always come back to this item F and say, materials and color, specific for the old town, you know, area.
Right.
Then this material will apply to that area only. Right? I mean, can that be done that way?
I like that.
That works for me.
Yeah. Okay, wait, re- repeat that again.
So let's just say that if we change this guideline from old town design review guideline to something else.
Right.
Because we know that there will be some expansion of the HBO zone. Going back to this page of eighteen, item F, materials and color. We specifically spread it out, material colors for the Old Town area only.
Okay, so anywhere else within the historic overlay district that's not within Old Town is gonna have something different?
Yeah, I mean, that will be then, it's questions of the creativity of an architect or whoever designing it, and it will still go through the planning commissions to look at the, 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 um, the design.
Okay, so that, I, I, I always like to play the devil's advocate as a, as staff. So I'm a developer, I've got a building. I'm just outside of Old Town, what we determine is Old Town. And I don't, and, and I come to you guys with this great, nice building. For example, I, I don't know where, but I come, it's, 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 it's modern style building. If you're gonna say with these guidelines that this, that these materials and colors and all the other stuff is only good for Old Town, then you're not gonna hold me accountable, then I'm not, then you can't hold me accountable for those guidelines, for those specific guidelines. Because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not within the Old Town area.
I know, but you are still under the HPO zone, so you are still sticking with my, I, our, our idea of you need to somehow match your surrounding. So if you decided that, you know what, Old Town don't like pink, and you decided to trick me as a commissioner to put the entire building in pink, I would say, well, your next door building is not pink. So don't use pink. I mean, can, can, can that be an argument? I, I get following out ideas here.
What do you think, Alex?
I, I guess I'm a little.
So if something is within the HPO zone, but not in Old Town, I, I, I mean, I mean, we all have a definition for what, like, in the future, we'd have to add a definition for what is Old Town.
Well, that, that's where I was kind of going. I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to, I mean, we'd have to basically create another set or some type of guideline for those areas that are outside of Old Town if we were gonna differentiate Old Town and Historic.
I, I, I am, on the other hand, saying that, you know, changing the name of this design guideline so that it can always overlap the HPO zone only specifically cause some of the sections related to a certain area, like in this case, we talk about the material and colors, okay? And yes, that means that what additional work that we need to do is to create a map that is really truly fine grained, related to the Old Town area. Right? So in this case, this material and color will only go to that new map, but the rest of it still apply to the overall HBO zone. I mean, you know, your way is also a better, a, a good way too, like we have to kind of start thinking about all the other, maybe creating another design guideline too. But I'm just thinking about like, what is the alternate?
Well, I, you know, my opinion on that is that if we make it, uh, to, if we make it specific, the developer can always say, oh, comply for invariance too. You know, so we're not saying they can't, it's just that we're kind of implying that they should. I silenced everybody.
Not to kick the can down the road, but this could also be something that if and when, you know, that gets looked at if and when there's an expansion of the HPO zone outside of Old Town at some point in the future. Um, it doesn't have to be addressed right now. When, right now is only Old Town properties.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, you know, yeah.
I'm already kicking the can.
Same here.
So what's the consensus?
If, if I'm reading it correctly through the chair, I think the consensus is keep the language on this material and color list as is. And then kick the can later on when we expand the HBO zone and talk about what items on this particular design review guideline can apply to those zone.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Adam, what's next?
Last, sorry, last one. Uh, page twenty-five. Uh, it's section four point four, A seven. Um, the use of native and drought resistant plants, shriveling trees encouraged. Um, it could be in our current California water situation, I think one of that should be shall.
Yep.
So they are only using native and drought resistant plants.
Yeah, that has to. Yeah, cuz that's one of those superseded things because we already have a, uh, the drought language, landscaping language there. Mm-hmm.
Which page, which page is that on?
Page twenty-five, section four point four, eight point seven.
Okay.
And that's it, thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else want, suggesting any changes?
Sarah, Sarah, do you have anything else that you? I have some things, but I
Go for it.
I don't wanna. Okay. Um. Okay, yeah, I, I, I guess there, there are more just comments, um. Things like, I, the, the reason that I'd really like to see this happen quickly is because of what has happened with the, the optometrist building. Um, I'm looking at page fourteen. Letter B, building orientation. Um, how buildings should be oriented and I think following this throughout here, we've ended up with a building that's got its electrical box right on Pinole Valley Road. And not hidden by, by trees that we had already discussed not being appropriate for it, et cetera, et cetera. And so if we had had these guidelines in place, we would have been able to say buh, you know, no, absolutely not. So anyway, so that's one, um. And again, on page twenty-four, the same thing, existing mature trees, creeks, and riparian corridors should be preserved and incorporated into landscape plans. There's another example that, you know, we didn't even think about there. Um. And so I guess I'm, I'm actually not adding to the conversation very much, vertical. So actually, um, going to page thirty-seven with the accessory building design, we addressed that in, when we were talking about, um, accessory buildings versus ADUs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, and um. We have rehabilitation guidelines. Actually, I guess I think that is pretty much it. Um, oh, right, and I guess my, my question is, is we can't go backwards, right? We can't go to Casa Amada and say you've gotta change your signage so that it matches stuff. We can't do that, right?
Nope.
So it's just going forward, so let's get these in.
So they change their sign, the design, then we can act. So we just think that, you know, they don't like their sign and they will come back to us.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, we've made all of our changes. I hope somebody was writing all this stuff down. Um. What is our what is our, the action that we're looking for here? I thought, um, um, do we?
So the, Dave, I think if you go to the, um, one more slide, uh, it, it would just be that, the, you know, for the plant commission to recommend the city council adopt the design review gaia, guidelines with, with the stated changes.
Okay, and part of that is, do we agree on the changing it to Old Town and Historic Design Guidelines?
Is that part of the past discussion or part of this discussion?
It, it's part of this discussion.
Perfect, thank you. I personally think that it should include Old Town, not, and it should include that language of Old Town because um, a lot of this is very specific to Old Town. Um, and I think that was the intent of it or the, the original intent. And then, but I also like the idea that it could be applied to other places outside of Old Town. Uh, parts of it. I think the tricky thing is, is kind of what we keep coming up against is, you know, if, you know, someone lives way outside of, uh, Old Town and ends up being president, like you said, um, you know, clearly we're not gonna say like, oh, now it has to be an old Victorian house. Um, or, you know, it has to have this type of siding or if you added, but and I don't know if there's a way that we could add a certain portion. I mean, I guess the the biggest thing is, is that there's a, a focus on matching what's around it rather than matching Old Town. So with, with that and with that in mind, then I think it, it makes sense to include that.
I mean, following our discussions, if we are gonna plan of kicking the can until we discuss about, you know, I mean, you know, like other areas, not, not in the current, you know, Old Town HBO zone a, any area anyway, then perhaps we can leave that name as is, and knowing for the fact that eventually we'll have to come back and and talk about some other guidelines. Uh-huh. Or maybe then we can think about changing the names. But for now, I think, you know, if, if the, the area, it's, it's gonna be the same. And our starting point is still the, the Old Town area, then, then I don't think there's a need to change it.
Okay. All right, so we don't change the name. And so those are the two recommendations that are up for grabs. A recommendation too, um, any more discussion, motion, second?
I, I think that's, we, we just had that the every reference to should will be interpreted as mandatory.
Yeah, well, you could just say that we, we staff recommends that the planning commission, you know, would do that and with the following modifications, which should include something that I hope David was, um, or Alex was writing down all the changes that we recommended.
Right, could we just have a summary of all of our little changes? Just the little check, 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 check.
Okay. First, first change on three point one. That was changed. And then all of you were on consensus with Adam's changes.
Mm-hmm.
So that was on page. First one was on page fifteen. No. Blank walls, uh, number four, blank wall shall not. Shall not. On that one. Um, on page sixteen, under C two, new buildings are encouraged.
Yep.
Uh, on page five. Should be shall, number seven, on number twenty-five. The use of native and droughts plants shall be, or shriveling trees, well, uh, we'll put, uh, we'll, we'll fix that, but it should be a shall not encouraged. Number fifty, on twenty-five, and then that's all I had, unless there was something else. There were comments about thirty-seven, but we didn't make any changes to them.
Hmm.
Am I right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I think I've got all the changes.
Yeah.
Hey.
Excellent. Okay, great, thank you.
So do we have a motion?
Uh. Go ahead, Sarah.
Um, I move to approve the Old Town Design Guidelines as edited. As listed by Planner David Hannum. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Great.
Second.
Wait, before we vote, and we'll take a roll call vote, right, Alex?
Yes.
Are we changing the title?
No.
No.
Okay, all right, just a second, okay. So with that, I have a motion in a second. So I'll take a roll at this point. Commissioner Benzouli.
Aye.
Commissioner Moriarty.
Aye.
Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Vice Chair Flashman.
Aye.
Chair Current.
Aye.
Motion curious, five zero.
Okay. And, uh, what about number two, do we do?
That we are the, uh, that was the previous recommendation.
That's what I thought. Okay. Well, that, uh, the, uh, I would like to remind, uh, the public, uh, if I can find the wording that, um, where's that stupid wording?
To the chair, it's okay to not read the appeal reading cuz this was just a recommendation to the city council, so it will be going for the, the council.
Good, then I would be, um, going all over the place looking for that stuff. Okay. Um, so that closes the, uh, public hearing. And we move on to the next agenda item, which is, um, the, go to, um, we have nothing for, uh, old business and G, new business, housing law review, so, um.
The chair and commissioners, our plan, um, was to hold this over to the next meeting when the two new commissioners are, are joined too, so they can get the benefit of it.
Idea. All right, uh, do we have to make a vote on that?
Uh, no, it's not a hearing, so I mean, if, if that's the will of the commission, we can.
Sure, sure. Okay. All right, um, we'll hold it over. And H is going to be City Planners Commissioners Report, and number one on that is the verbal updates of projects.
There, we, we had, you had the list I had last time, which I don't, for some reason, I can't put my hands on. Um, however, we did, uh, we did take in two new, well, we took in another, uh, affordable, uh, housing project at eight eleven San Pablo, um, so thirty-three units, uh, and so we're using some density bonus on that property. Uh, that's one of the old city properties for redevelopment. And so, uh, we're in contract with a developer, and so we'll be moving that forward through the process, um, as well. We're continuing to work with the, with the property owner at twenty-eight oh one Pinole Valley Road. We sent them a notice of complete, completeness letter um, to, to, um, uh, to, to do it, to, to make improvements to his plans. Um, and so we're working, we're working with him on that. Um. The, because I know you have questions, but there have been updates with the, um, with the, the eye doctor's building. Yeah, I wasn't too happy about the, all those, uh, all of those Italian cypresses right, right along the front edge. Uh, we worked with him to grab another couple of, uh, native trees that we will, they'll, they'll be replanting, they'll be moving some of those, uh, Italian cypresses to other parts of the property. And that will bring a lot more color, a lot more, uh, broader, a broader, um, um, canopy, so to speak. So kind of block a little more, but at least highlight with the colorful trees. So I'm working with him on that. And just to let you know, the building's not I'm working with them on that. And just to let you know, the building's not close, it's not even closer being final at this point. It will not be filed until I'm satisfied with what they've done in terms of landscaping. So, so I'm working with them on that.
Yeah, because the whole approval of that project was based on the fact that the landscaping was going to be the architecture. And not just a big white building, you know, it's, it's not coming out that way.
So I'm working, I'm working with what got approved as the landscape plan. And I'm twisting some arms and I'm working with Dr. Lee. He's been, he's been very cordial to work with. And he's answered a lot of my questions of what I'd like to see. And so we're, we've got a good working relationship at this point. So, so we're, so we're moving forward on that.
A question, David. Will, will that electrical box be blocked as well with some landscaping shrubbery?
Yeah, there'll be, yeah, there'll be some shrub, there'll be some taller shrubs that will block some of that. There will be, I think one of the trees or one of the new trees that we're proposing will, as it grows, the canopy will block that, will block those, block that box. So yeah, there's, there's, there's landscaping to cover, cover some of that stuff up.
Will, will the cypress, the Italian cypresses, will any of them stay or will all of them be gone?
No, a couple of them will stay. We're gonna mix some trees in between just to kind of, just to kind of, because they were on, and I have, I don't have, I don't have it in front of me right now, but I've been trying to, because there was a landscape plan that was approved. And so I'm working with the approved landscape plan and what's being proposed at this point. Okay, so I, so I mean, he could tell me, you know what, I'm planning it the way I want to plan it and that's it. And I really don't have a lot to say about it. Because that project was approved, what, three years ago, two, three years ago? So we are trying to work with him. We are, is it gonna be a perfect fit? I, I, I'm gonna tell you right now, it probably won't be a hundred percent to your liking of what, what you have, what you want, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to get as much in there as I can to offset some of that, some of that. Okay, so I don't know if I'll be able to move all the Italian cypress trees. I probably will be able to get two or three of them out of there, which will do a lot of, that will, that will, I mean, once the other trees come in and they bloom and they do that, it will, it will change that look in terms of the area, but the trees will have to grow. And they're gonna, there'll be fifteen gallon trees. And so, yeah, so I'm working on that. Okay, but like I said, am I gonna get a hundred percent? I don't know. And I don't know when that mattered, when he, when he decides to push back. I haven't gotten there yet, which is because I think we've got a good working relationship. And so I'm just trying to keep that good working relationship and move some stuff. He's been very, like I said, with this, he's been very easy to work with, so we're just going with that.
Well, I think the key with Dr. Lee is that this is his, he wants this to be his life work, you know, he, you know, I think he, when he's going through the process, he was talking about how he'd like to have this done while his mother's alive and all that, because so he's, I think he wants to have something that he's proud of.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, and, and, you know, I can't, we can't answer for the other, for what happened three years ago in terms of the approval process, because I don't think the only one who was there is probably Dave at this point, or maybe Simon. I don't know, I mean, and, but yeah, I mean, it's a whole new commission compared to where it was three years ago, and that's sometimes what happens, you know, you approve a project and three years later, or six years later, someone will come in before they build it. Oh, what was that planning commission thinking? We need to change all that. We need to add this, subtract that, and do all this and do that. And, and we have no, and I have no authority really to do that. You've got, you've got an approved project.
The plan was for that, those trees to stay, and the fact is, is that those trees got taken out. The reason that, because I was there, I wasn't on the commission, but I went to the final approval meeting. And, and one of the reasons why that, why the, the plan was approved was because those trees that got taken out were gonna stay there. That was a huge tension. And so now this, the landscape plan that's been implemented is nothing like what was approved.
I agree, and, and I, if, if, if you remember, Sarah, I don't know if you remember, I actually was the one who actually opposed that building new design so much. Not until they are coming and say, okay, we will do something, you know, on the landscape plan to make sure that material of the fund is being covered by landscape. Otherwise, I'm not, I'm gonna stick, stick to my point and saying no to it, you know, I think I'm the one who is like kind of in the middle of it and like, I kind of, that's what I recall. So, you know, the, the current plan is not really close to what I think I remember.
No, I mean, and I can tell you since I approved the tree removal permits, if you looked at those trees and what those trees were gonna do to due to the footprint of his building and to the, and to the, and to the utility boxes, to the utility boxes that were, that are in that area, it'd be all destroyed.
Right, but then, David, it should have come back to us.
Yeah, I mean, it could have, yeah, I mean.
I mean, to approve a new landscape plan, that should have come back to us. To, to change, this is, I mean, this is a center thing that is in Pinole. This is something that I drive by every day.
Right.
And, and it's something that a lot of people in Pinole drive by every day, and it's not what the planning commission approved. Then it should have come back to us to approve a new landscaping plan if the original landscaping plan wasn't gonna work. And so the cypresses, they don't match.
No.
We just spent an entire, you know, an entire meeting talking about making sure that our community is cohesive. And is a place that is welcoming and where we want to be and, you know, has that Old Town feel. That building in and of itself, you know, it is what it is. I understand that.
Right.
But then the landscape is the thing that was gonna save it. And make it so that it was Pinole. And, and now that's been taken. And, and been taken in a way that isn't that wasn't what the planning commission wanted and wasn't what, you know, as appointed by the city council, not what the people of Pinole want. So I think there needs to be a change in terms of either the process of how this happens. If there's a significant change in a landscaping plan, that should probably come before the planning commission again. Even if it has to change, but then that means something else needs to change. So if those trees weren't gonna be there, then maybe that building couldn't have been there.
Well, I don't, and I'll, I'll defer to Alex on this. So if you've approved a building and the spot of the building and they changed the landscape plan, I, I don't know how much authority you would have to take to reopen the whole entire project. So, so just, just, just know that in terms of it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily would give you another shot at the apple. At least for the whole building and the whole, the whole, the whole package.
Yeah.
But.
What I'm getting at is this landscaping plan is what made or break, what, yeah, made or break this this building. And, and how it looks right now, I drive past it every day and I'm angry.
Yeah, I mean, I drive by it every day as well. I mean, I drive it to and from it. And, and that was not, the cypress trees were not what we talked about. And so that's why that's, and why they even got planted in the first place. They shouldn't have never been planted, so they're probably gonna have to all be uprooted. Because that's not what we talked about. So we talked about some other more native trees in the area to provide more of a color, color scheme across the, across it, and that, that wasn't, no, we're, I'm working on that. So just to let you know that, I'm not, I'm gonna try and get all those Italian cypresses pulled out of there and put somewhere else. So that's, that's the goal.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Let me see, in terms of other projects, bigger projects, we're still, we're still waiting for an application, probably in the next two weeks for the old hospital property. There's a developer that's looking to build some multifamily project on that parcel. Or those two parcels of the old hospital, we're working on that. And, or it's still, we'll hopefully be getting that. And of course, Pinole Vista is still out there. Pinole Vista is out there. We haven't really heard a whole lot from them lately, that we were supposed to expect something in, in early to mid February, but we haven't, we haven't seen anything yet. However, Pinole Woods, which is on San Pablo, they're getting ready to submit their application. We met with their, with their people, and that's about another hundred and seventy units that we're looking at. And that, we're hoping to get that application here in the next two, three weeks, so. We sent them there, it's like a draft, the draft conditions or approval that we usually use. We've been in contact with them about a couple of things, so we go forward on that. So when they submit on that.
Okay, and the citizens we heard, they brought up the issue with the the Sprouts Park, you know, about, about the trail, I guess it was.
As far as I know about what's going on over there, I, I'm not quite sure. I know that we have been going after the owners of Sprouts or the shopping center to fix that. I just, I'm not sure where that's at.
Okay.
Public Works has been handling that side of it, so I haven't really, I haven't really seen much of that yet.
Maybe you can have an update for next, next meeting.
Yeah, I will. I did want to make a comment. Mr. Rafael Menes made a comment on, on G one, on the housing law review, which basically his comment was, greeting commissioner, staff and public. Given the limitations discussed in this item on, on subjective guidelines by SB thirty-five, slide twelve, page ninety-one, what impact will that have on Old Town Design Guidelines the commission has just recommended that the council adopt as part of the historic preservation overlay, given that there are mostly subjective, they are mostly subjective by that standard. It is unlikely that ten plus family developments will be planned for the Old Town area anytime in the near future, but with the potential for expansion of the overlay, I think it should be considered. So that was, so we'll, we'll take that up. I'll print that out. We'll put it in the minutes for tonight's meeting and we'll, we'll have it for we'll have it in the, we'll be able to talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay.
So the last thing about Sprouts, as our, our last meeting, you were gonna speak with the city engineer on the update of the trees that were to be planted along the creek and what mitigation was, or I guess it's not even mitigation anymore, but what was going on as far as making sure that, that there were, was more vegetation planted in the city that had been promised?
Yeah, I still have to, I still have to talk to her about that. I was gonna talk to you about both items. I haven't, I haven't been able to do that.
Okay.
I will have something for you at the next meeting on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else that you have, any questions of staff you have right now?
Any comments by the commissioners? Just, just speak out if you have anything.
No, I just, I, I appreciate the work that staff does and how we do this. But I, I, I agree with, with Commissioner Flashman and Commissioner Wong, who shared just a deep, deep disappointment with the process that has landed us with a building that, you know, perhaps the owner is proud of and considers it his life work, but does not at all match what, what is there. So I don't know if we need to revisit how the process happens, you know, how legally we have any recourse or anything like that, but I just wanted to echo that disappointment and just discouragement with the process that means that what a planning commission had chosen and voted for was in the end disregarded. And not necessarily by staff, but by the developer and by how that worked out. So.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else, anybody else have anything they want, would like to say or add or question? If not, we have no, go on to the next agenda communications. We have none. And the next meeting is going to be March twenty-second at seven PM. So I will adjourn this meeting and see you next March.
Great, thanks.
Thanks.